Hi, good evening. The time is now six thirty and welcome to this regular board meeting of DeSoto ISD Board of Trustees for January twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen. Time is now six thirty PM and I'll call this meeting to order. Item one A calls for a welcome. I've just extended you that welcome. Item one B calls for an invocation from our very own Dr. Kerry Moore of First Baptist Church in DeSoto, Texas. Item C calls for pledge students from Frank Moats Elementary. And item one D calls for our district mission statement, which will be read into our hearing tonight by trustee Aubrey Christopher Hooper. If we don't mind, let's stand for a word of prayer.
Let's pray together. Father God, again, we thank you so much for the day that you've given us today. And we pray tonight for our school board. We ask you to give them wisdom. We ask you, Lord, to help them plant the seeds that will produce such great fruit through our children and this community. I pray tonight there'll be such a communication and joy as we hear good news as well as celebrate the opportunity to be here tonight. So be with this board. Give them wisdom and strength. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Zaraya Daniel is nine years old and is in the third grade in this Tiffany Dawn's class at Moats Elementary. Her favorite subjects are math and science, and in her spare time she likes to play with her sister. She is on the student council and was a participant in last week's UIL competition. She has a younger brother who attends, excuse me, a brother who attends McCowen Middle School and a younger sister. She is a proud daughter of Anna Maria Salinas of Glen Heights, and she hopes to be a teacher one day by attending college, which will surely offer her a scholarship. Ricardo Botello is ten years old and is in the fourth grade in Ms. Christie Grimes's class at Moats Elementary. His favorite subjects are math, reading, and writing, and in his spare time he enjoys playing video games and playing outside with his brother. He has an older sister, Alexa, who attends McCowen Middle School, and a younger brother, Rodrigo, who attends Moats. Ricardo is the son of Ricardo Botello and Rosio Ortiz of DeSoto. Ricardo aspires to be in computer science and develop video games one day, and he hopes to attend Texas Tech University in Lubbock.
DeSoto ISD will prepare each student academically and socially to become a problem solver and productive citizen for a twenty-first century global society.
Thank you trustee Hooper for reading our mission statement. Thank you to our wonderful pledge students and your parents for being here tonight and leading us in the pledge. Thank you Pastor Dr. Moore from First Baptist Church for leading us in the invocation tonight. Board, I will read into our hearing now item one E, which is our emergency statement. DeSoto ISD takes the safety of our students, employees, and guests very seriously. In a case of emergency situations such as a fire, please exit using one of the marked exits unless directed otherwise. Should we experience inclement weather such as a tornado, we'll ask all guests to move quickly into the interior of the building away from all doors and windows. Our emergency operations administrator will monitor the situation at all times as well as coordinate with local emergency responders regarding when the situation has passed. Thank you so much. And I fail, board, to recognize those parents. So, parents, if you don't mind, our pledge students, parents, if you don't mind, if you don't withstand and be recognized at this time. Thank you for entrusting your children with us. Board, item one F calls for us to establish a quorum. We do have a quorum with six board members present, so we're ready for action. Item one G calls for the highlighted school, Frank Moats Elementary. If we have anyone from Frank Moats Elementary School, whether you're a teacher or a principal, if you don't mind, stand, or a faculty member and staff, if you don't mind standing and being recognized at this time. Thank you so much for all that you do for kids. Board, that brings us to item one H, which is our special recognitions. We do have under one H-one, which really feels awkward to say, Board Recognition Month. Dr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. To our board, once a year, we have an opportunity to set aside some time and recognize our board members. I think many would agree that once, once a year is certainly not enough for the service and time that you dedicate to our community, to the families and children here in DeSoto. But we do want to pause and say thank you during this month. So, we do have a proclamation. It reads, "Whereas the mission of the public schools is to meet the diverse education needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and an ever-changing world. And whereas local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the children. And whereas local school board members work closely with parents, education professionals, and other community members to create the education vision we want for our students. And whereas local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system. And whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to public and public expectations to the district." Now therefore, I, Dr. David C. Havens, do hereby declare my appreciation to the members of the DeSoto School Board and proclaim the month of January two thousand and seventeen as School Board Recognition Month. In DeSoto Independent School District, I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members and in working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children. In official recognition whereof, I hereby affix my signature the twenty-third day of January two thousand and seventeen. Congratulations to our all-star school board here in DeSoto ISD. Please help me give them a welcome applause. Absolutely. Thank you so much. At this time, we always set aside some time also. We always invite our most senior member of our administrative group to come and give words because they've been here the longest with many of our school boards. And we're going to ask Mr. Pittman if he would come, as he continues to be our most senior.
Good evening, Dr. Harris, President Sherman, and members of the school board. I don't know that I'm the longest. I think Dr. Insley may have me beat by a few years and maybe one or two others, but it is a distinct privilege to speak to you tonight. Last year, I spoke about courage, and I spoke directly to you, but this evening I want to speak to members of our public since I know this is being streamed really to the world. And so, I talked to the public tonight. School board members are ordinary people who have an extraordinary dedication to our public schools. We take time this evening to thank them for their untiring efforts. Many of us forget about the personal sacrifices school board members routinely make, and I see it in the eyes of Dr. Harris and Dr. Lamontier, Ms. Levels on the day after school board meeting. Untiring is the key word tonight. Too often, we forget about the important role school board members play in assuring local control over our public schools, control that is in the hands of people that we know, people who live in our communities served by DeSoto ISD. Too often, we forget that in the tradition of a representative democracy, school board members are our connection to influencing how DeSoto public schools are governed. Too often, as citizens, we're quick to criticize board members and their decisions without really knowing all the details and the endless amount of deliberations that went into any given decision. Too often, the efforts of school board members go unrecognized and unrewarded. But we can begin to correct these oversights tonight, which is in January, which is School Board Recognition Month. This is a time to show our appreciation and to begin to better understand how board members work together to provide leadership for our schools. I can say this on a personal note, the school board works closely with parents, education professionals such as me, and community members to create the educational vision that we want for our DeSoto students. They help to formulate goals, define expectations, and set the course for an equitable and exceptional education program for all students. I remind everyone in the audience that the school board is accountable to the public. It is responsible for assuring that the public money allocated to DeSoto is providing a good return on the investment. Thus, the board oversees regular assessment of the district's students, staff, and programs. These particular board members are strong advocates for our schools and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. We, as administrators of DeSoto ISD, ask that this month and in the future, please join us in saluting these courageous men and women who provide grassroots governance of our district. Please make a special effort to tell each member that their hard work has been noticed and is very much appreciated because your hard work is noticed and is very much appreciated by us here in DeSoto. Thank you so much.
Well, not only is he our senior, but he also represents our elementary schools as well. At this time, we're going to call our secondary representative, which is our high school principal, Ms. McCowen.
Well, good afternoon. I'm glad Mr. Pittman went first. He said everything I wanted to say. So, I'm going to simply say thank you. Thank you, thank you, for all that you do every single day. As Mr. Pittman said, you guys have lives away from being school board members, and so we do appreciate the time that you take out to come and serve the district, to serve the students, the staff, everyone that works for the district. The decisions that you make are hard ones, and we do understand that. I tell people all the time, it's easy to make decisions for your own children. It's easy because you know what you can get them to do. But it is very hard to make decisions for thousands of students, other people's children. It is hard to make those decisions, and you always want to make the right ones. So, we appreciate, you know, as I said, the job that you guys do every single day. I know that you don't take it lightly, and we thank you for that. At this time, I would last ask that the other principals in the district please stand. And so, I do believe that I can say on behalf of all the principals again, thank you for your dedication, your support for everything that you do, again, for the staff and the students here in DeSoto ISD.
Thank you.
Also, board, I want to remind you, every year, we try to do something to recognize you and appreciate you in a very unique way. So, we think we have something that's very unique this year.
So, we ask each school board member to give us someone who represents them as an all-star. So, we're going to start with Ms. Daniel. She chose Coach Tom Landry. Coach Landry is her choice. He demanded excellence in himself and everyone around him. He was always prepared, paid significant attention to detail. He was devoted Christian, father, husband, and was married for fifty-one years. I did not know that. He served his country proudly. He was a pilot in World War II. He was a team player. She says he played football for the wrong school before he was a coach, but that's okay. What school was that? Oh, you're not saying that? Okay. Anyway, we have this special presentation that I hope that you will hold dearly. It is your own Tom Landry bobblehead. Next, we have Mr. Gann. Mr. Gann chose a young man that was injured and hurt on the football field. He is not afraid of the field or was afraid of the field. And this comes in our very own, Mr. Corey Bonner. He exemplifies a strong faith in God, which turn your challenges into victories. He represents courage, strength, determination, and a true love for DeSoto ISD. As a long-term board member, I have experienced the challenges and the victories of the district, but my love for the DeSoto ISD students, staff, and community is where I serve. He says my all-star nominee is Mr. Corey Bonner. Corey's bobblehead. Next, we have Ms. Kathy Gold. Her all-star is Mr. Jason Witten. This is a quote from Jason Witten. "The legacy we leave, Witten's life shows that while the own-field stuff is great, what he really cares about most is changing lives. This is a privilege that we have as Christian followers. We can play a role in changing lives, not just bettering the quality of life or at least giving effective coping strategies, but instilling a hope that will never end. We do this not for our own name or renown, but for the glory of God that can do the impossible. Like taking a sad, hopeless situation, whatever hard things life is bringing our way, and turning it into an amazing connection with our Creator and a means to show love to others." She says her hero is Jason Witten because of the example he set for people to give to others. I pray that through the connection I have had to thousands of children throughout my years in education, that I've given them a hope for a good, better life. I always told my story and that through God's grace, I became who I was, that God could help me. I planted the seed and then prayed that God would use it to further His kingdom." You get your very own Jason Witten bobblehead. Next, we have Mr. Aubrey Christopher Hooper. He says Muhammad Ali is such more than an all-star. He is the greatest. However, his legacy of greatness far extends beyond the world of sports. Speaking truth to power, loquaciousness, Ali said things that often challenged the consciousness of mainstream America. He expressed himself with force and forthrightness, not to mention no small amount of charm and charisma. Ali became a magnet symbol of dignity and self-determination to several generations. Muhammad Ali transformed himself from being merely a boxing champ to a champion of the people, the people's champ. Speaking out against injustice and racial inequality, his legacy of social change has cemented himself as much more than an all-star and has helped him shape modern America. Every day, I aspire to follow his example and to have the change, the courage to risk it all for fighting for humanity, equality, and basic human decency. Muhammad Ali bobblehead. Next, we have Mr. Jerry Hall. He says Tony Romo is a Christian, and he shows in everything he does. He's a class act and a team player. His all-star is Mr. Tony Romo. Next, we have trustee Sandre Moncrief. She says courageous, bold, and driven. These are all attributes that I admire in Ms. Serena Williams. She has dominated her sport through her sheer athleticism, tremendous hard work, and never giving up even when underestimated and disrespected. I believe that all of these attributes are important for everyone. The Sandre Moncrief All-Star, Ms. Serena Williams. And now to our president. Our president has chosen as his all-star, Mr. Jesse Owens. Mr. Owens showed us what true perseverance and resilience look like. His triumph over Hitler and the supposed superior Aaron race in the nineteen thirty-five Olympic displayed perseverance. His bold approach to life and a separate and never equal American society gives us a good picture of what true resilience looked like. In his book entitled, "I Have Changed," Mr. Owens says, "I realize now that militancy, in the best sense of the word, was the only answer where the black man was concerned, that any black man who wasn't a militant in nineteen seventy was either blind or a coward." For me, for me, that quote is a reminder of the great responsibility I have to our community and our students. We must be militant in our pursuit of providing a world-class education for our student. Militant defined as viciously active and aggressive, especially in support of a cause. For this team of eight, he says, our Board of Trustees, that cause should be the ninety-eight-hundred student that we represent every day here in DeSoto ISD. Mr. Sherman's all-star, Mr. Jesse Owens.
Thank you so much, Dr. Harris. Central administration, principals that are here in the room tonight, that was the most awkward presentation and is every year for us to sit here at the horseshoe and hear you guys speak to us, but we definitely appreciate everything that you guys do. You guys are the true all-stars in everything that you do day in and day out. So, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sherman. And if I don't do this, I'm sorry. I forgot one thing. If I don't do this, Ms. Landry is going to kill me. So, let me do this real quick. Also, here's your, let me go to the front.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Board, continuing in our special recognitions, we've got a really special group of individuals, and so we want to highlight them at this time. Item H-two, DHS choir members, named all-state. Trustee Moncrief.
Congratulations to DeSoto High School's newest all-state choir members, Brayla Cook, junior, and Juliana Simone Falvi, freshman. Brayla made the all-state mixed choir in ALTO One, the top ensemble in Texas. Juliana made the all-state treble choir as a soprano one, the top female ensemble in Texas. All-state, sponsored by the Texas Music Educators Association, TMEA, is the highest honor a Texas music student can receive. DeSoto High School has only had two all-state choir members in the past, nineteen ninety-five trailing merit and twenty-fourteen Marcus McGarrett. Juliana Simone Falvi's mother, Rebecca, was all-state in band for DeSoto ISD in nineteen ninety-three. Samuel Orta qualified for area in both band, flute, and choir tenor one. Byron Hanspar, junior, qualified for area in choir bass two, and Montavion McKinney qualified for area in choir tenor one. We are proud of all forty-five singers.
And what did they say about marketing? It happens all the time.
In 2014.
Oh, okay.
Because you know, he's at TCU.
TCU, right.
Come out.
People in there. I didn't want to be the cause for understanding. I don't want to stand up too many times.
Thespians earn top state ratings. The state finalists for the Texas Thesbian Festival, who received superior ratings and are eligible to compete at the International Thesbian Festival, are as follows. For duet acting, Felicia Johnson and Brayden Singleton performed main stage at the state festival. In duet acting, Danielle Dilly and Zakaria Washington. In duet musical, Keith Walker and Mia Hendricks performed main stage at the state festival. For group musical, Asia Moore, Latavia Coy, Deshawn Thomas, Ricky Hewitt, Autumn Moore, Kealan Bronson Smith, Jeremiah Cole, Jeremiah Tompkins, Zaraya Walker, Nisha Taylor Scott White, Halani Timms, Anaya Porter, Albany Bonds, and Nadia Cole. And if the parents of the Thespians are here.
Good evening. I'm here representing the Thespians, Troop 2161, and we just wanted to show a little appreciation, so we have a card that we all sign, because usually, you know, theater's not recognized in many schools, but DeSoto making one of their priorities to make sure that every year, they support us, go to nationals, they come out to our shows. I see many people, I see many of y'all faces come out to our shows, and we just want to appreciate y'all and thank y'all.
Thank you so much. Hopefully, in a few weeks, when we have a meeting that goes till 11:00 PM, we can think back to this day, when you all said thank you. So thank you so much for being here, being the best part of DeSoto ISD. And Board, I'm going to take a little privilege right now. I want to recognize, in the same vein, Jordan Malone, who is going to regionals in two weeks on the swimming team. And so she is here as well, and so thank you for being here tonight, hanging out with us, right? All right, Board, that brings us to item I, which is citizens' participation. We do have need of that tonight, and so I'll read into your hearing right now, a statement from the Board. "We've designated a portion of our meeting to hear from members of our community. This is not the forum for complaints. We have procedures for hearing complaints, and those must be exhausted before matter is brought to the Board. This is a posted public meeting of the Board and not a meeting of the public. And according to what the Texas Open Meetings Act, all meetings are open to the public and media. The Board may hear some matters in executive session, however, any decision must be performed in an open meeting. In addition, we are not permitted to discuss items not on the agenda. Nonposted items may be considered for a future meeting. No presentation shall exceed five minutes, and delegations of five or more persons shall appoint one person to present their view. You are respectfully reminded to address the Board and not the audience during your presentation." Our first card tonight comes from Sammy Anderson. If you don't mind, step to the podium and state your name for the record, and then you may begin.
Good evening. My name is Sammy Anderson, and I would like to thank each one of you for all that you do, including the principals, the teachers, and all of the board members. I have been a member of DeSoto for quite a while, and I've known quite a few teachers and principals who've always gone over and beyond. I don't mean to bring a complaint, but I do mean to bring a concern. That concern would be looking at our dress code standards. Whenever we have a dress code standard, I think it should be addressed as just a warning. I think if a child loses his badge, I don't think he should have to sit in ISS. I think that takes away from his learning time, and I think that at that time, if he has to basically forget his badge, I think maybe we should have a count set up where he can basically be charged amount for that badge, and at that time, the parent could have a time to pay that. I'd rather it be that he's in class, or my child is in class, than sitting in ISS for a badge. I don't think that a badge and uniform should go together, because if you've given a warning for a uniform, and then that child loses his badge, I don't think that that's fair to think that those two go together, because it looks like that child is basically ignoring the warning when it's two different things. And so that would be my concern, and I would just like for you guys to reconsider how things are done, and not to see our kids sitting in ISS for those type of minor things when they could actually be participating in class. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we have one more presentation. That'll be from United Way. United Way, Ms. Levels.
President Sherman, members of the Board, it gives me pleasure to come to you on behalf of the 1,200 employees of DeSoto ISD. I represent all of the employees, and we have an annual campaign in which employees have an opportunity to give back to our community. We know our community gives so much to us. We have several different ways in which we do that. United Way is one of them, and we select the United Way because we know that that comes right back to our community. Specifically, we know that the United Way, that they provide grants for commit. Commit has done a lot of research for DeSoto ISD. In addition to that, we utilize the Child and Family Guidance Center. They provide direct counseling to our students at several of our campuses here in DeSoto, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, the family place. A lot of our students receive food from North Texas Food Bank, and we know that United Way assists them, and so every year, we go to our employees and we ask them to give a donation. Sometimes, we have different campaigns, and we try to make it fun, because we want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to give whatever they're able to give. And so this year was a record-breaking year, so we were very excited with asking Mr. Lowell Anderson to join us from United Way, and Dr. Harris will present the employee donation to United Way in the total of eleven thousand, two hundred, sixty dollars and seventy cents.
All right, thank you so much, United Way, and thank you, Ms. Anderson, for speaking with us tonight as well. Board, that brings us to item two, which is our consent items. Item 2A calls for the election, 2B is approval bid for HVAC Supplies and Equipment, 2C is approval bid for custodial supplies and equipment, 2D, 2017, 2018, calendar approval, 2E, 2017, 2018, course catalog revisions, and 2F, minutes from the previous meetings. Trustee Moncrief.
I would like to pull under 2E, middle course catalog revisions, the middle school course catalog revisions, I'd like to have some discussion around that as well, and I also, before we take a vote on item D, the calendar approval, I'd like to have some discussion on that proposed choice.
Okay, trustee Moncrief, as I understand it, item 2E and 2D, you'd like to pull for a separate consideration. Is there any further comments, questions, discussions related to that? Trustee Gold.
She just mentioned the middle school course catalog. I want to talk about the high school course catalog, too.
It's pulled out under 2E. Anyone else? Okay, so Board, right now, for consent, we are on the table, consent item 2A, call of the election, 2B, approval bid for HVAC Supplies and Equipment, 2C, which is approval bid for custodial supplies and equipment, and 2F, minutes from the previous meetings. Entertaining motion from the Board, if there be any at this time.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Hooper, a second by trustee Hall. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. And motion carries, seven, zero. Board, that brings us to consent item 2D, we'll take right now, which is our 2017, 2018 calendar approval. Trustee Moncrief.
I just wanted some feedback regarding, I saw the information that was provided, and it seems like the staff and yeah, calendar committee overwhelmingly approved, Calendar B, that's a proposed calendar that's being asked, that's being asked for us to consider. But I just wanted to know, is there anyone here who can speak to the rationale for pushing that Christmas break back so late? And did anyone consider parents who are going to have to find additional care for children who will be out of school for an additional week, when other districts will likely have gone back to school? So then, winter camps and stuff will have closed by that point. Now, I just want to hear the rationale. What is the rationale for that?
Good evening, Ms. Moncrief and Board members. In our discussions regarding the recommendation of the recommended calendar, we found that during this most recent holiday break, there were several schools that were out, including two major, large urban school districts, Fort Worth and Dallas ISD, both were out during the break. And based upon the numbers alone, some of our staff members that are also parents expressed their concerns about aligning with the larger school districts, because they themselves had children, or there were some conflicts with care, and so they appreciated the fact that they could align with the larger school districts in order to provide care for their own children, as well as our children here in DeSoto, because we know a lot of our children have caretakers. And so during that break, we found that during this last break, the two largest school districts were actually closed when we were open, and then vice versa. When we returned, those school districts had not reopened yet, and so there were some concerns about that, and that was the major push. They would prefer having the longer break after the holiday versus having that week before the actual Christmas holiday itself.
Did anyone consider looking at the surrounding districts? I get the larger districts, but...
Yes, we looked at the Region 10 calendar. We look at the Region 10 calendar every year. They provide a recommended, but it was obvious that Dallas and Fort Worth decided to do something different. But that was the format that we followed, was the Region 10 format that we actually voted on last year.
On another note, I would like to commend the committee on not doing the practice of what we had last year with doing this professional development and parent-teacher conferences on the same day. I'm glad to see that it went back to the original way, and thank you all for considering parents in that vein. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Moncrief. Trustee Daniel.
What happened to the District of Innovation grant that we voted for? Because this looks like a normal calendar to me, but I have a second part of that question. Are we extending the school day or changing the school day? Or is it because we're counting it hourly that we can start as late as we are and get out by May 31st?
I'll answer one part of that regarding the time. You know, the state of Texas, I guess two years ago, decided that instead of the number of days, they changed it to the number of minutes.
Oh, minutes, not hours.
And so based upon the number of minutes, and this requirement, 75,600 minutes for each student per year, and so we can adjust our times and our days as long as we meet that minimum of 75,000. And with the number of school days, I think it's a 450 minutes per day, and then time the number of days on the calendar, student days, and so we were able to exceed that amount.
Okay. And one more thing. I see we have five days of professional development, and we have two teacher workdays. I would like to emphasize that we need to have all teacher meetings during professional development, and the teachers need workdays to work. No meetings on workdays.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Daniel. Trustee Gold.
Yes, I missed the part, Mrs. Levels?
Yes, ma'am.
About how the District of Innovation grant and that committee had feedback onto this calendar.
I didn't speak to that. Dr. Harris will.
They did not have feedback, because we've just now started the process of looking. So the question would be, could this calendar change or another recommendation come based upon that committee? And the answer would be yes.
And what would that, just to be clear, right? What would that time period look like if there were a change? If I'm not mistaken, was it 45 days before the start of instruction that we have to amend?
If you look at the approved districts of innovation, currently, they all begin the second or third week. the second or third week in August.
You're talking about before the calendar?
Oh, how long to approve the calendar? I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that is true, forty-five days.
Forty-five days.
Prior to the end of the school year.
Yeah.
Correct. That is correct.
Thank you. Trustee Daniel.
Okay, so I want to be sure I understand. So if this calendar is changed, we vote on it again. It's not just going to spring on us and there we are.
It would never spring.
Yeah, the Board approves. Yeah, the Board approves the calendar.
Okay.
Period. No period. Any further comments, questions, discussion? It should be noted, three hundred and seventy-one voted for Calendar B and the next highest vote getter was one seventy-six. So I think we have a clear landslide supermajority, if you will, of the calendar. Seeing here, no further comments, questions, or discussion. Entertain a motion if there be any at this time. This motion is as it relates to Item 2. Get my letter correct. Item 2D, which is the 2017-2018 calendar approval. Clear motion.
Move to approve the recommendation of administration Calendar B for the 2017-2018 school year.
A motion by Trustee Hooper, a second by Trustee Gant. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. And motion carries, seven, zero. Excuse me. Let the record reflect that motion passes six, one, with Trustee Moncrief voting no. Board, that brings us to Item 2E, which is the 2017-2018 course catalog revisions. Trustee Moncrief.
I had some, I'm asking for this item to be pulled because after reviewing the course catalog, I had some concerns. My first concerns were that for sixth grade student, I didn't think that the AP classes and the ability to take such classes was properly spelled out. And as we know, the course catalog is our guide, it's our handbook. So I didn't want, I didn't want parents to be thinking one thing when, I didn't want parents to be thinking that there were these AP classes were there if they weren't there. And I wanted to make sure that we actually are offering these classes to sixth graders because inasmuch as I am a fan of the programs and I admire all of the magnet programs that we have in place, there are some parents who don't want that. They just want traditional stuff. They want the pre-AP classes and they want regular classes. So I want to make sure that those kids who are not enrolled in any of the magnet programs also have the opportunity to be enrolled in the pre-AP classes, if that's what they desire, or the other classes. And as the way the calendar is written now, it's not reflecting that. So I just wanted to make sure that that is properly reflected. My second issue was I had concerns about the elective offerings for middle school. Again, we have put programs in place regarding, or magnet schools, or magnet programs that we have in place. And I would like to see that there are some electives that are a bit more reflective of the magnet programs that we have in place. Because again, there are some children who may not want to do the magnet programs but would still like the sort of exposure that some of the magnet programs offer without necessarily being immersed in a magnet program, per se. And again, I'm a firm believer that public school is there for all types of children. We got to meet the needs and the desires of all children, no matter what motivates them to come to school. And for me, it's just an effort to make sure that these things are provided. So I would like to see what we can do about offering more electives at the middle school level. And I'd like for us to have, my colleagues can weigh in on anything that they might have to add. And for you all to tell me, what would that take in order to accomplish that?
So, any elective would need an FTE in order for that to happen. So I think it'd be wise and prudent for the Board to really look like what would be the impact on the budget, you know, at this time, especially when we're in this phase of moving forward with building the elementary school. I am in totally support, I just want to be real clear, of adding elective choices to the middle school. But I think it would take a workshop to really sit down and look at what it would look like. Once again, one of the goals for the district is to ensure that anytime we add an additional program, that we roll it out in a way that's smart and intuitive about what we're planning to do and what it's going to look like, what is going to be the impact, overall impact, basically do an action plan in presenting that. So I'm certainly not opposing, and I don't think anybody else is opposed to doing that. It is, what is the mechanism in order to make it happen?
Okay, so it sounds like, it sounds like, Trustee Moncrief, Dr. Harris, you guys administration can work offline as it relates to that. I know the Board has had a conversation about that in the past. And if we need to schedule a workshop, let's go ahead and get that done. Trustee Gold.
Again, I guess, I think that some of the, I just keep hearing that the way some of the middle school campuses are structured and some of the programs that are offered there, some of them overlap, some of them conflict with time in the school day. And so I thought, again, that this District of Innovation grant was going to be able to have some feedback about some of the course offerings and some of the ways that all the schools were structured, but especially maybe at the middle school and the high school level. So is there a possibility that that will impact this for this year? Or are we looking at a long-range plan where that will be looked at for the coming year? For the next year?
You can look at district offerings. I don't, I'm not really sure exactly what you're asking us for is what is offered or what can be offered? Because there's an array of offerings. Can you give me like an example of...
Well, we have heard from parents, and I know you have too, and I continue to hear that maybe some female leadership is needed at least one campus, but maybe a class in leadership for the female students at all three middle school campuses. And again, if we could work that out so that that was a credit, like Ms. Moncrief said, that would be a, you know, offering for them to get an elective, an elective credit. And I'm sure there's some statewide, there's some classes that could be molded, tweaked to fit into that. And I thought, I guess I just thought this District of Innovation committee was going to be rolling out faster and that they were going to look at things like that if that was what the community supported.
All right. So they can look at every aspect of the district if they so choose and bring those recommendations back to the Board. You know, I would say to the Board that we can look at a lot of different things. Because I know, you know, we can all have an idea about what we'd like to see happen. Just remember that every time we do add a program that's not funded by some other mechanism like a grant or something, it is an FTE. And it's an FTE that will be with us as long as that program is in place. And so it doesn't take long to really mount up substantial costs every year when you start looking. I don't have a problem with it. I wish we could afford everything that I wish us asked for. I mean, I really wish we could. And for a season, we probably could. For a couple of years, we could probably support a lot of things. But after a while, it'll start catching up with us. And I would just caution us, moving forward, that we just look very closely to see what is the long-term impact of whatever we put in place. Are we talking about something that's sustainable for a year, or two years, three years, five years, 10 years? You know, what is that impact? And so we, I will say this, we've tried to do things or put things in place that we know that can be sustained over time. I mean, that is one of the things that we systematically try to do. And so, or go after grants also that will repeat itself, like the Gear Up Grant. You know, every year, we have an opportunity for the Gear Up Grant. So that is one of those grants that keeps on giving. Not all of them are like that. So all I would ask is that, as we move forward, just really think about, you know, drop the pebble in the water, there's a ripple effect that goes out a lot further than sometime we can think out that far. So I would just say that. But we can certainly sit down and look at it. I support the female leadership program. Let me just say that. It's a matter of how do we implement it, how do we sustain it? Okay?
Trustee Daniel. Oh, I'm sorry, you should have followed.
No, no.
Okay. Trustee Daniel.
All right, on page five, this is not exactly serious, but on page five, could we shrink that picture? We don't have to stretch all the way across the page.
Where is that?
The high school catalog.
I don't, the high school catalog. I don't know if you've looked at it, but it's sort of like looking at one of those mirrors at the fair.
Page five?
I mean, maybe the men don't care, but the ladies do. But also, maybe go over the nails or turn it around. But the other thing is, on that page, Trustee Gant's name is not on there.
Oh, that's interesting.
So part of this is serious.
That is serious.
Is it?
And the other question is, and this is probably, doesn't even fit in here, but the course catalog describes the courses. When do we get the order of the courses? Because I understand there are some changes in the Texas Education Code, especially in English regarding English IV, since that's important to me. So when are we going to hear about that? And when are the kids going to hear about that?
So the kids actually set their career paths or crosswalks, pathways. They actually set those up actually in the eighth grade, in the eighth grade. So they are very much aware from the time they start in the eighth grade of what that will look like.
Those pathways or coherent sequences, they are in the catalog. I can try to find a page number for you where it tells you the coherent sequences for CTE for when they're choosing and what we used to call the four-by-four, but it's not the four-by-four anymore. So the suggested or the recommended pathways for the students.
Okay, but that's not exactly what I'm asking.
Okay.
I've heard, just through the grapevine, that Texas Employment, Texas Education Code, paragraph 14B says that if you're going to take English IV, you have to have passed all the other Englisches before you get there. Do our kids know that? I mean, I haven't seen it on paper, but I have heard that from multiple sources.
I would have to say we'd have to do our research on that because I don't know for sure that that is necessary.
And I've been in meetings recently, and it could be a recommendation, but I don't, we'll have to research that and see. But if that is the case, that's definitely something we would definitely need to make known for parents, students, teachers, everyone involved. Because that would definitely be a change in practice.
Well, I'm just thinking, we can't spring it on them their senior year and say, oh, by the way, you can't take English IV because you didn't pass English III.
And I would venture to say, if that is the case, we would put into procedure in place ways that they can go ahead and so that we could try to keep them on track for graduating because that was one of our goals for graduation. But we would research that. And as I said, I have not seen that pass anywhere.
It's chapter 14, not paragraph 14.
It's the recommendation she's looking at. And they always have.
And they usually have quite a few recommendations. We've talked about several recommendations that would have an impact on the way we operate. And so we do watch that. And if that should occur, then we would come up with procedures and practices to address that. Thank you.
Trustee Hooper.
Yeah, I mean, I hadn't heard that that was actually in place, but that would have a potential devastating impact because, you know, a lot of school districts do like progressive scheduling. Like if a kid only got first semester, they passed the first semester, maybe didn't pass the second semester, then they would progressive schedule him for like English II and he would recover, you know, whatever section in the credit recovery or some option like that. Because otherwise, that could potentially throw off, you know, just the sequence, the total sequence in which, so please, get as much information. And then, in the event that it does pass, obviously, come up with some scenarios on how we would work that because that could cause some severe chaos. I do have a question. I never noticed this until now, well, until reading you guys' course catalog. And I know that this is a local decision. And I notice how, in terms of determining grade level classifications, that we have six credits in order to be classified as a sophomore thirteen and then nineteen, which is really interesting because I've seen six, twelve, and eighteen. And so I just thought that that was interesting. What was the justification for that? I mean, I'm not opposed to it, per se, but I know, I know a lot of school districts. It's always been... Yeah, and I'm sure...
That's another area we have to research. I've kind of polled the table here and we have no idea.
I'm sure it's been in place for a while. I just wanted to know the philosophy. And I know it's a local decision because the school districts can determine, you know, when they, if they do mid-level classifications and all of those other things. I just thought it was interesting that I was looking at the grade level classification.
I do know that we've always been above the state. Like when they require twenty-four, we require twenty-six. So we want an effort to keep students on pace for graduation.
Absolutely. I'm not opposed at all. I just wanted to know our rationale. And I might use that to inform, you know, other decisions with my own entity. So I just was, it's good to stay current on this, knowing that kids that leave me go back to their school district. And this is information that I needed to know in terms of the communication that I'm giving to even some of my own students. Because every school district doesn't have their eleventh grade classification at thirteen. So, good to know. Especially if I'm telling kids that they're going to, that they're receiving school district would classify them according to the number of credits. But if I'm telling you twelve and DeSoto ISD's telling you thirteen, then, yeah, I don't want to be telling false information or alternative facts.
Thank you, Trustee Hooper. Trustee Gold.
Yes, along with what we were talking about a while ago, Dr. Harris, we received a handout at the course catalog changes. And just looking at this, I guess I couldn't figure this out. I'm a former career and technology teacher, and so I was very interested to see that we have added a total of thirty-five career and technology classes to the course catalog according to this list. I guess I needed to know, did we drop thirty-five previous career and technology classes? Did we, are we adding these? Why are we adding these? Does this include, is this going to mean additional personnel teachers at the high school level? Thirty-five classes seems like a lot. Do we have teachers already in place that can teach these thirty-five classes? Or are we going to have to hire people who are certified to teach them? I'm not opposed to adding career and technology classes, I just needed some clarification.
Yeah, so it doesn't mean that we're adding any additional personnel. It's re, some of the courses are being renamed?
Named by the state, that's correct.
Right, okay. Because the state sometimes allows you to change names. So let me let CTE and you guys can clear that up, but I know we're not letting it stand.
Right, okay, they are additional, they're offerings, but many of them are changes to the names. And the other thing with our CTE courses, we have the offerings that follow our coherent sequences and so that they will have those opportunities. But if a class does not make, then we don't offer it. But none of... does not make, then we don't offer it. But none of these would cause us to have any other FTEs. And sometimes also with CTE, so that we can have students able to matriculate in that coherent sequence, we have to have stack classes. Like, while it seems like a lot, you know, you only have one session, section of that class, because that's what they need in that coherent sequence, so we need to offer it, but it won't be a full load, so it doesn't look quite as much, like much. Need to add anything? That's correct, okay.
Well, then I can speak from the teacher perspective of this, and I know if we have to do it, we have to do it. But I know one semester, I ended up with five preps, because they were semester classes, and because we were trying something new. And so, you're teaching, say you're teaching management and transportation systems, distribution of logistics practicum, and distribution of logistics and employability skills, et cetera. You're teaching a class, a semester class, and you have seven classes to teach in a day, and you're teaching five different classes. The next day on block schedule, you're teaching six classes, and you're teaching five different classes. You could actually end up with seven, eight, nine, ten preps, if there's only enough kids to be in each one of those semester classes. I've been there, I know that can happen. And I think that that is stretching personnel to the max, and I think that we really need to look at that.
So, sometime what ends up happening is, say, a student starts out, or you have enough to make a class as a, I'm just going to say sophomore, so you have enough to make that class. But by the time they become seniors, maybe you only have one kid that may be in that. So, it would not be fair to that student, one or two, for you to say, well, I'm just going to drop that your senior year, so you're not going to get that CTE certification in that. So, sometime you have to carry on those courses anyway. Because remember, we started deciding which courses we're going to offer in high school based upon the eighth grade career choices that they asked for, hoping that, that's why they don't like students to change their career path until they're at least to tenth grade. Because we've got to predict FTEs based upon what those eighth graders say that they're interested in doing. And so, it just wouldn't be fair to a group of students. I think we ran into that with our nursing program, one of our nursing programs, where these kids started together, and then by the time they were getting to be seniors, we only had like five left in the class or something like that. So, we had to carry it out and respect them getting that certification in that particular nursing program, versus just saying, you know what, it's only five of you, and we're not going to offer next year. That just wouldn't be fair to those students.
That's why I'm wondering if it's really prudent for us, I guess, to offer such a broad range of course selections, that maybe we need to keep it more narrow, so that there won't, we will not be spreading our personnel so thin to teach thirty-five different classes. Because I don't think, how many CTE teachers do we have in this whole group?
We have forty-five. She said the number has increased. And I will say, at the board's request, and at our own knowledge, the high school does work to look at that. I know at most levels, they pull that schedule and look to see how many preps they have. We've done that exercise several times. It's an ongoing exercise to try to ensure whenever possible and wherever possible, that we are reducing the amount of prep times, prep periods.
Thank you, trustee Gold. Trustee Hooper.
Well, I mean, I understand the dilemma of potentially the workload and the burden on the teacher, and I know that we do every, make every effort to try to limit the additional preps and things of that sort. I'm a little bit cautious of eliminating opportunities in that, you know, one of the, the things that we have kind of marketed to our student body as well as their parents is providing, you know, an opportunity and a, and a space for young people to explore their wildest imaginations in terms of career opportunities. And, you know, there's a big push from the state that is actually pushing, you know, this CTE, this career exposure, and this, that, and the other. And so, I get it that, you know, we want to try to focus them in, but I don't know if, in doing that, if we're truly preparing them for what the jobs of tomorrow might look like, if we narrow our offerings. The second thing is, I know, and I hate to say the forbidden place, but at Town View, they don't, they didn't really allow us to like change magnets after sophomore year, because, you know, it throws off the balance of this, that, and the other. So, that tenth grade year, they really want you to make up your mind, period. But, I mean, I get, you know, the, the potential burden that this might cause on the staffing, as well as potential, the need to do FTEs. However, to Dr. Harris's point, you know, the reality is, we are dealing with young people who changed their minds, but we don't want to cause a burden also on the child who decides that they want to be a pilot. And if he's the only one that's in, that has, you know, excelled all the way to, you know, aircraft technology private pilot in his senior year, I'm assuming that that's the senior year course, well, we don't want to take away that opportunity for him or her. But, you know, I get it. But I think, you know, we've come a long way in terms of our offerings. And so, I know that some of this is just us revitalizing the names and this, that, and the other. I mean, because surely, adding thirty-five new courses, it's not, it's not even practical, because, you know, I don't even know if we have enough kids or staff to support that. So, I know some of this is them changing the names and revising the TEES and all of that type of stuff. But, you know, I would be extremely cautious in terms of kind of limiting and narrowing our offerings, only because that's not the message that we've been, you know, communicating to children, especially as we are about to face the school choice fight of our lives in terms of, you know, the national push, as well as the statewide push. But unfortunately, school choice in that vein doesn't necessarily mean additional offerings and this, that, and the other. But I think I'll leave it there.
Thank you, trustee Hooper. And, and, and I will say, this was, board, if you can recall, this is a direct response to what our community wanted. We're, we're here at the behest of the community who elected us. The community, by and large, said they wanted programs. So, I don't think, I don't think the sentiment from this board is that we're going against the community's will, and that we will be eliminating programs and having a narrow focus. But I do want to bring the board back to, back to this course catalog, which, which we're spending a lot of time on, which is good. It's been good conversation. But I want to bring us back to trustee Moncrief's original point as it relates to the middle schools and potentially adding our programs, which would as consequence allow or require us to add FTEs, in which Dr. Harris responded, said, hey, let's have that conversation at a workshop. So, my assumption is, and this may be a large assumption, but my assumption is, we are not prepared to take action on this tonight. However, I believe we've given administration a lot of information to consider on, you know, before our workshop, and we'll come back for consideration. So, just a couple of things that I, that I jotted down as you all spoke. We need to have a conversation about teacher preps versus the teachers that will be teaching the class, right? So, as far as the FTEs, those thirty-five courses, which you all said, we have forty-five teachers already, but thirty-five courses, what that looks like on a scheduling basis. I think we need to have some kind of conversation about that when we talk about the middle school catalog. And so, that segues me into the last part, which is the middle school catalog and potentially adding FTEs or programs to that middle school level. Board, did I miss anything as it relates to a request that we have for administration? Trustee Gold.
Yes, I would like to get clarification about how many classes of these thirty-five are name changes, and how many are brand new. I guess that would help, because I did not read that correctly. I did not know that were name changes. I read it that they were added CTE classes. I did not know that they were name changes. So, if you could give us a list of how many are name changes and how many are really new classes, that would help. If they're all five, thirty-five name changes, then it's no big, I mean, it's totally, you know, a washed subject. And then, I guess also, if you could just tell us along that line, how many CTE classes we had this year, or maybe how many we had last year, this year, and then how many are proposed for next year. That would kind of give us a frame of reference for how CTE is growing and how many classes are being added. Does that make sense? So, and then I want to address Mr. Hooper's comment just briefly. He said, take away any opportunity for a child, that we don't want to not offer these, because we don't want to take away opportunities for children. That is definitely true, but we can say that about a lot of things. We, about, we would, just like Dr. Harris said, if we had the unlimited budget and the magic crystal ball, we would give every child their perfect schedule, adding an opportunity for them that was designed just for them. And that's just not what public education is about. We can't individualize for every child. And so, we need to be careful about what we're offering is, can be utilized for the majority of the children and be for what's best for the majority of the students.
And one of the things about this board is, we've always been data-driven, so this data is based on community needs, community interests, as well as the offerings that we can provide that lead to pathways for our students as it relates to the Texas Education Code, right, and the things that they're pushing with House Bill Five and things like that. So, I mean, I, I think we hear that, we receive that. Administration, you don't need to wait until the workshop to send us that information that trustee Gold just requested. You guys can send that as soon as you compile that report. Did I miss anything else? Trustee Moncrief.
Just real quickly, since Dr. Harris has been talking about a workshop, I'm concerned about, in terms of a workshop, how would this impact these choice sheets that are going out, that are going to be presented to the students in mid-February? I'm concerned about that, because then that's still, there's still nothing being offered essentially, but the same old thing for the fall. So, I'm a little concerned about the timeframe of the workshop and how quickly decisions can be made, because I'm concerned about the impact for kids for August, September, when school starts, because, as we know, schools are, it's competitive now, folks. And I, and listen, I got a kid who's going to middle school in the fall, and I'm just going to put it out there, if it ain't good enough for my kid, then it's not good enough for anybody else's kid. So, that's the mindset that I have when I look at this stuff. I just want to make sure that, that the kids, I'm concerned about the kids. What are they going to have? So, I just want to know what, what kind of timeframe, how is this going to impact these meetings that are going to happen in February? Because from what I'm seeing right now, I just think we, there's got to be something else that we can, that we can do.
Perhaps you can clarify for us, right? So, you mentioned AP courses and them not necessarily being spelled out in the catalog, correct? So, that's something that we can fix, administration can fix right away, send that back to us. But the latter part is the part that I think that we need a workshop for. If I understood correctly, the latter part was, you want to consider additional offerings that are not offerings that we have in place right now, correct?
Correct.
And so, so my question for the board, and obviously, all of us sitting here being stewards, my question would be, are we able to formulate what that looks like, what those offerings one should be, how much those offerings are going to cost, and the potential pros and cons down the line? Are we able, is that something we're able to do before February? And, and if you guys tell me yes, administration, you say, yes, we can do that before our meeting in February, yes, we can do that before, before those offering sheets go out, then I say that there's no reason why we couldn't. However, in keeping with what we've done historically, and making sure that we, one, get the surveys out to parents and students to see what the interest is, and two, see what those long-term effects are for us as a district financially, I don't, I don't think that's enough time. So, I did want to separate those two to make sure, one, that I understood you correctly, but two, that we do set, to your point, set a reasonable timeframe, so that we have the offerings we need for our students enrolling for the fall. So, let me, let me first ask administration again, if we were talking about adding FTEs and programs, what's a reasonable timeframe to get all that done, to get the community buy-in, to get the, you know, logistics, first of all, on the campuses, as far as how we're going to house these classes, things like that? Just give us a ballpark timeframe of what that will look like.
It's really hard to, you know, golly. I think it'd be very difficult to do it before, is it February, that the choice sheets go out?
That is correct.
Yeah, I think it'd be very difficult to do that. There's a lot of logistics that come along. So, at, I don't know, at some, at a couple of middle schools, I think space is going to be an issue. So, we got to really think about what that's going to look like. I think, you know, you know, you're probably okay with these, but, you know, you got not hurting kids at McCowen. But I think it'd be difficult to get it by that time. Not saying that it cannot be amended, because as you remember, we start the budget process in, in February, and so I think that is time to talk. So, I think, will we have that conversation? You can always amend your course offerings, so it's not like...
That's correct. Am I correct?
You can always amend your course offerings. I think that you almost got to get into your budget to see where you are before you start making too much of a commitment. Or decide whether you're going to do incremental progress, you know, implement something here, and then implement something the following year, that type of process. I think it has to be thought out, and I think we're, we need to do that. We got to think it out.
And, and let me say, I think we're throwing the word "program" around too loose.
No, we're not talking about program. We're talking about electives.
All right.
Let's make that clear.
You're absolutely right. We're not talking about another program. We're talking about electives, yes.
I just want to be clear, we're on the same page. I'm just talking about electives.
That is correct, yes.
My apologies, yeah. So, FTE for an elective for a course offering.
Correct.
Trustee Dan, I saw you move forward.
What kind of time do you guys need to do it right?
I think you got to get through the, through the budget process first. I think we should do that before anything else.
Is that?
You're going to hear a little information tonight that's going to kind of start shaping our minds about where we are, and then I think, once we start looking at our budget in, in February, then that'll give you a better direction.
Well, I just, I just, my thoughts are just, I want to make sure that whatever's done is done right, so we can be really effective with the kids. And I don't want to rush into something to try to make it happen, and we're really not, those are just my thoughts. But in order for a child to get the most impact out of this, my thoughts, and I've always been, even if it takes another year, we're really, I'm just, I just want to see us do it right, so the kids get the biggest impact of the decision-making process, so.
Thank you, trustee Dan. Trustee Daniel, there, did you see your Tom Landry's in there?
Oh, well, Tom Landry needs to get out of the way there.
So, yeah, I can't see him outside.
I thought you were ignoring me. I have a question and a comment. I'm talking about the beginning of the process not being a result when they're seniors. How many students does it take of these eighth-grade students that might dwindle down to one by the end? How many students does it take to make a class? Is there a number, like colleges, like fifteen or?
That is the number we've been using, fifteen.
Fifteen? Good. All right, and the other thing is just a statement. I just want us to remember while we're working toward the end result, that we don't want to overload the course, the core classes that are responsible for our test scores. And, you know, all the research says that numbers count. So, if we have to hire all these full-time teacher equivalents, then we need to be sure we have enough for the core classes also. That's all. That's all.
Okay. Any further comments, questions, discussion, board? Okay, so just, just to recap once again, thank you for the clarification, Trustee Moncrief. Administration, you guys don't have to wait, once again, to get that back to us either. You can update the course catalog with the pre-AP offerings that, that she's asking for spelled out so her parents have a clear indication of what their child should expect and what is being offered. You can send those back to us ASAP. Electives at the middle school, I'm sorry for using the word "programs," I apologize for that. Electives at the middle school, let's set a workshop for that. I don't think we have a clear, well, basically, listen to the board, we want to make sure we do it right. So you all, from now, you know, and throughout this week, you guys be in contact, Dr. Harris, I'll be in contact with you, be in contact with the board of what we should expect and what that timeline would look like for that moving forward. And then also, you heard Trustee Gold's sentiments as far as it relates to FTEs, or not FTEs, but teaching preps versus courses being offered and all that good stuff. Board, we've, we've beat this horse, it's dead. Any further comments, questions, discussion? All right, look forward to the workshop coming up. And, and once again, I made the assumption that we're not ready to take action on this. Seeing and hearing no movement, we are not ready to take action on it. Board, that brings us to item three, which is our report items. Let's take item three, A, B, and C together. Three A, December tax collections. Three B, December financials. Three C, 2016, 2017 mid-year financial report. Dr. Harris.
Yes, sir. I will just roll right into, right into Ms. LaBoard, and I'm sure he has a tight, condensed report together.
Thank you, Dr. Harris and members of the board. I'm sure it's exciting for a lot of you that I'm losing my voice, so I'm going to try to make this as quick as possible before it's gone completely, so I hope that'll help. I'm just going to skip over the December and financials and tax collections because I think we'll cover that during the, the mid-year financial update because they're, all the reports, all of this is as of December the 31st. So as we, as we dive into this, we'll go through our student counts first, and we'll talk about our other funds, debts, and child nutrition, our general fund. Then we'll just kind of talk a little bit about our budget, where we are right now as far as expenditures and revenues, and what impact this has on our fund balance and what we're going to be looking for a little bit going into the 17, 18 budget year. And I apologize for not having you a hard copy of this. I procrastinated until too late to start printing it, and when I started printing it, my printer went out on me, so I'll, I'll try to get you a electronic or hard copy of this as soon as possible. I'll send that out to you. First thing we'll talk about, everything, you know, revolves around our average daily attendance and our student count, so I think that's a good place to start, is our base. Enrollment, we projected our average daily attendance, which is what we're funded on, our attendance, which drives our average daily attendance and our, the funding impact on those. As you can see from this, this is a daily, I put these in each and every day, and we've been doing it since 2010, 11. So you can kind of start seeing a little bit of a trend. You can see the, how, how every year it basically trends, for the most part, the same. That's why we feel confident that when we get to the middle of the year, we can really start predicting what the rest of the year is going to look like. You don't see a lot of anomalies in there. We did have one last year where we had a drop around the middle of February that we're, we're hoping that we don't have this year. It doesn't look like we're going to have that, that drop that we had last year, so that will change the, the numbers slightly, but it was only for a few days, so it shouldn't make a big difference. So that, those are some of the reasons we feel confident when we start projecting out. Our average daily attendance, as you can, oh, as you can go back, as you can see, we were 43 students above at the end of the third, six weeks. We're 43 students above where we were last year on that date. However, as you go to your average daily attendance, you'll see that we're actually six students below where we were last year on the same date, at ninety, at 9,151.6 last year, at 9,157.6. And the reason for this primarily is the fact, like we said, how attendance ties in. You have 43 more students, but, oh, why are those like values on there? What happened? When did that, well, it didn't, okay, well. As you can see where it is, the bottom of that box is at about the 95.6. That's the current, the highlighted box is, the bottom of that is 95.6. And as you can see, we've been at 95.9, 96.4, 96.7 over the last few years. So when you have a slightly lower than, than historical attendance rate, and you only had 43 more students, that's what turned into that six students less in your average daily attendance. So the funding impact on this is, our initial budget, if you recall, we, we, we budgeted for 9,249 in our initial budget. We revised our forecast moving forward using the historical data from last year that we'll be looking at 9,139. Like I said, of course, this certainly can change with attendance, it can change with a lot of things happening. Our special education FTEs, we're actually looking at a, at a lower number on there of about 52 students. Our bilingual ESL, we're about six students difference, that's, that's negligible within the realm of plus or minus. Gifted and talented, we're, we're on target on that. Career and tech, we're actually 76, we're predicting 76 students higher than we, than we budgeted in our compensatory or at-risk population. We're forecasting that to be almost exactly where we were. So what that means is, because of that 106, 111 students difference in our average daily attendance that we're projecting, that would project to a total funding shortfall of 1, 6,685. Moving into our general fund, we'll talk a little bit about our revenue and our expenses, the payroll, the utilities, and the campuses, and then our fund balance on that. As of the 31st, we had collected 69% of our local general fund anticipated revenues, 47% of our state, and 34% of our federal. Local, of course, is going to be a lot higher than that in January because it's all of our taxes, and that's when we get the majority of our taxes by the end of January. That will be up in the upper 80s to 90%. In our state, we know exactly what that percentage is going to be. So right now, we've collected, as of December 31st, we've collected 54% of our total budgeted revenue. Expenditures, as you can see, the contracted services, supplies, other expenses, we're all right in that 90, that 50% area, which is, would be about normal considering you're halfway through the year, so being at 50% is normal. Our debt service, of course, is that QZAP payment, so that's, that's all paid at one time, so that shows 90% of that. And then the 95% on the capital outlay is funds that were expended early in the year for your multipurpose center renovations for your wrestling program. So that's why that's showing, that's showing 95%, the majority of that's already was expended before the year started, the school year started. Your payroll at 42%. If you looked at, this is kind of a little misleading because you think, well, we're six months in, we should be halfway through of our payroll as well. What, what the way the system works is that the system uses accrual accounting, so we only book what's earned. So if you look at a teacher, as of December 31st, they'd actually only earn 72 days. So they're only booked for 72 days, while our cash outflow would have been actually half. What we have to book for, for the accounting purposes would be for the days actually worked. So we will book the rest of the days at the end of the year as they, as they're booked because of, like you say, you've got, you've got a short November, and then you've got a short December. So we only booked those 14 days in December and whatever it was in, in November. So that's why it looks like a lot shorter, and 42% is not actually. Professional salaries, like I said before, the 40% and the 45, other salaries would be anything that has to do with stipends and things like that. Your benefits, you can see at 52%, that is booked on actuals, so that's not, that's not accrued, that is booked on actuals. And your TRS on behalf is, is accrued also. Apologies. So that gets us, that gets us back to our 42%. Utility projections, we're right on track, looking at $6,488, that's, that can be, that can be changed within a day, $6,488. So we're tracking just to be right on, right on target right now with our utilities. The position control in our general fund, since July 1, 2016, we added 46 total positions since the budget was approved. Thirty-four of those were direct instructions, two pre-k daycare, eight others, which are operations, athletics, et cetera. We did our three trainers and some other operations personnel, two campus administrative and no central administrative. We also, at that time, we dissolved 11 positions, so the net change to the budget is 1,169,755 plus benefits for those new positions. So our 16, 17 mid-year financial review at the campuses, this is how much the campuses are budgeted and how much they've spent. They were budgeted a little over $2 million. At this time, they've spent a little over $1 million halfway through the year, 48%. Of course, this is non-payroll, nonutility athletics or anything like that. And your percentage at each individual campus runs anywhere from some campuses have spent as little as 33% of their budget and some as much as 76% of their budget. Our debt service fund, moving forward with that, all of our local and state earnings, of course, are, are on track. Our debt payments, we made that great big payment in August, so that's the majority of our debt payments. We did have to supplement a little bit out of general fund, but we're not going to do a budget amendment yet until after the taxes come in this year and we see exactly how much we need to. I didn't want to, I don't want to amend it now based on what we might, what we might receive in tax, tax revenue. So we're, we'll wait until after the February payment and all the taxes are coming in before we consider amending that budget again. But we are out of our fund balance, and this is something we will definitely want to look at, a possible increase in the interest and sinking fund when we start doing our budgeting process to pay for these new bonds that we sold for the new elementary school. Our child nutrition update from Chartwells, because of the way the system is set up, we've received 39% of our local, 46% of our budgeted federal. This isn't as, as critical to the fund balance because we know based on our contract that we will be receiving a guarantee of $300,000 plus from Chartwells regardless of what the, the bottom line is on that. However, as you can see, it's moved from payroll and, and supplies to the contracted service that we, that we have with them. They're currently, as of 12/31, we've served over 782,000 meals. This is 38,000 fewer breakfasts than we served last year at this time, 18 and a half thousand fewer lunches than we had this time, so 56.4 fewer meals served this year as of 12/31 than last year. 74.64 free and reduced, it's a little lower than last year. A lot of the, the lower part of the meals served was from the very first six to 12 weeks of the year when they were still getting their footing before they had started really cater, tailoring their menus to DeSoto. I think over the last couple of months that it is, the last couple of six weeks periods, it started moving back towards, getting back towards where we were last year at this time. I mean, on a monthly basis where we were, it's going to, it probably won't be able to catch up this year, but we are moving back to each, each six weeks having about the same as we had that six weeks last year. So the summary of this is, like I say, we've talked about, the student counts are lower than expected. Our utility uses, we're right on track. We're still looking for cost-saving opportunities. As we talked about, we're going to need to look at increasing our INS tax rate based on the, the current bonds that we just sold for the new elementary school. And we have a healthy fund balance in food service funds, which, as you know, during the audit, we discussed that we're going to have to move about 745,000 out of their fund balance to, to do some things at those schools to keep us in compliance. And then we're going to just kind of have to really keep a watch on our general fund for negative trends and start, start paying attention to that and try to figure out what we're going to do. That's why I'd like to start the budgeting process for next year in February of this year with our first, probably one of our first workshops in February. We've, we've kind of, kind of put together a projected enrollment for next year, some student counts going forward, but I would like to have a workshop with the board before we make those public and get them out there. So that's kind of where we are with that. That's, that's the total of my, my, my production at this time, and I would, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. LaBoard. Board, this is our mid-year financial review. This is a standard report item. We'll entertain any questions, comments, or discussion if there be any at this time. All right, sounds like we're saving it off of February. I will say this, board, get ready. I'm sure we'll have a lot of healthy discussion as it relates to this. I kind of share with, with you all, I spent, I did 12 hours of training a couple of weeks ago in Austin, and this was a part of it. They were talking about school finance and the consequence of school choice, and so it's something that we really need to spend a lot of time on. I know, Mr. Gant, you speak about it on a national level with the different organizations that you're with, but in short, the long and short, Mr. LaBoard might have his hands tied. And I say that because if the voucher system goes through, just so you all know, and they pull that average daily attendance that goes with that, with the student, and they pull the funding that the state gives us, what could potentially happen and what more than likely will happen is those students that it costs us an average of, let's just use round numbers, $3,000 to educate, we know that's just an average. There are some students that have special needs that it really costs us $4,000 or $5,000 or more, or more. And so what typically happens is you lose a group of students because charter schools are selective, they choose who they want. They take those students who only require $3,000, and they leave the students who require more for us to educate. Well, if you've got a budget that's, that your strings are tied, your funding is cut, right? It creates problems and issues for us funding the day-to-day operations of the school district. So this is going to be a very intense conversation, just, you've been Fox forewarned, right? February is going to be a very intense conversation, and we need everyone here. So if we can, Ms. Rand, let's start polling. Dr. Harris, let's get those dates now, because it's going to be important to have everyone at the table to have this conversation moving forward and how we market the district as a way, as well as it relates to that. So seeing no further comments, questions, discussion, right? I think that's a perfect segue into our next topic, which is item 3D, detach and annex process, annexation process. Dr. Harris.
Okay, we've been talking about this process that we would need to do in trying to move forward with the annexation process, and so we do have a representative here. One second. From, representative from Rogers, Morrison, and Grover, and she will, they will review the requirements and process related to contiguous school districts potentially detaching and annexation school property.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Good evening, trustees. I'm Sarah Langwa, I'm a partner in the Houston office of Rogers, Morrison, and Grover. Sorry, I said the H-word, you know, that small city down from here. It's a pleasure to be with you guys tonight.
I've been practicing school law for a little over 10 years. I'm a product of public education. My mom taught in the same school district and was in administration for 36 years, so the fruit doesn't fall that far from the tree. Let's get started with detachment and annexation. There are two governing statutory schemes for detachment and annexation, and I believe that you guys had looked at least at one of these options several years ago in about 2013, 2014, but for one reason or another, the idea got, got pushed to the side and has resurfaced again. And we also have several new board members since the last time that you all considered this. You all can't be 16-plus years like Mr. Gant, and so this is a refresher for some of you, and for others, it will likely be the first time you're, you're being introduced to these two statutory schemes. The first statutory scheme is Chapter 41, Subchapter C. And Chapter 41, as you may know, is where the wealth equalization, the Robin Hood statutes are located. And under Chapter 41, this is the mechanism by where two districts agree by a formal written agreement for one district to detach property to another district, which in the other district is referred to as the annexing district. According to TEA State Funding Division, with whom I spoke this morning, no district in Texas has used this process seeking to detach property as a means of equalizing their wealth level. There's several different methods that districts can use to equalize their wealth level, including, you know, purchasing attendance credits or educating non-resident students, and those are the two most popular ones. Although this has been in statute for some time, again, TEA is unaware of any district actually using the Chapter 41 process for detachment and annexation. Again, under the, that scheme, the two districts enter into an agreement whereby territory may be detached from one district and annexed to another, but of course, there are certain requirements regarding wealth equalization levels that must be met. And for this particular annexation and detachment scheme, the commissioner must certify agreement. You have to get the commissioner to sign off. Under this Chapter 41 scheme, the territory may be detached and annexed by agreement if... Under this chapter forty-one scheme, the territory may be detached and annexed by agreement if the wealth per student of the district from which the territory is detached, so in your case, it would be Dallas ISD, is equal to or less than the equalized wealth level. This is sort of a fancy way of saying that Dallas ISD must constitute a chapter forty-one district, which they do. And the wealth per student of the district to which the territory is annexed, in other words, you guys, is not greater than the greatest level for which funds are provided under subchapter F, chapter forty-two. In other words, DeSoto must be a non-property wealthy school district, which you constitute a non-property wealthy school district. The main point of these sections is that, the, these two sections of chapter forty-one is that they involve complex calculations that depend on the amount of maintenance and operation tax revenue per weighted student available to the district as well as other factors. And that's where your CFO comes into play and not me as your lawyer. Also, under chapter forty-one, the district can agree to allocate debts and liabilities per that agreement. And the, if portions of a parcel are located in different districts following that detachment and annexation process, then the parcel is appraised for taxation as a unit. And the agreement has to allocate the taxable value of the property between the districts. Finally, with regards to the agreement by statute in the administrative code, the agreement can't be limited in duration. So the agreement, if you were to go forward with chapter forty-one, the inter-local agreement between DeSoto and Dallas could not, the agreement cannot contain any right to cancel the agreement. Once the board votes to enter into the agreement, there's no reneging that promise. And the agreement can't include any sort of cancellation provision in it, and that's according to statute. After the agreement is executed by both districts, then the districts have to give notice of that agreement. Quote, "As soon as practicable after the agreement is executed." And that notice goes to each affected property owner as well as to the appraisal district in which the affected property is located. Finally, under chapter forty-one, as I mentioned, the boundary changes have to be approved by the Commissioner of Education, who will review the wealth equalization levels and ensure that all of the statutory requirements regarding wealth equalization are met. The individual with whom I spoke this morning at TEA, and I didn't disclose it was you guys who was looking into this specifically, said that if anybody's looking to do a chapter forty-one detachment or annexation, should probably alert TEA sooner rather than later to ensure that you don't get too far down the road in that process before you are ensuring that the wealth equalization calculations are current and we actually meet the requirements of chapter forty-one. So if you decide to go that route, I would advise you to call TEA sooner rather than later to ensure that they are on board and that all the calculations are done correctly. Subject to a few exceptions, the annexation and detachment in chapter forty-one, there's some overlap with chapter thirteen. But there is specific statutory guidance that says if they, the two conflict, then chapter forty-one is going to prevail. So that's chapter forty-one. The more popular method of detachment and annexation lies in chapter thirteen of the Education Code, specifically in thirteen point oh five one. And this is where it's not a district-initiated detachment and annexation process, rather it's a resident-initiated process for detachment and annexation. And under chapter thirteen, this is where the registered voters may initiate the detachment and annexation. And a petition requesting the detachment and annexation must be presented to both boards of trustees, to both the board of trustees of the district from which the territory is to be detached, so in this case Dallas, and to the board of trustees to which the territory will be annexed, and that's you guys. Importantly, there's five threshold statutory requirements to go through the petition process for detachment and annexation. First is the contiguous requirement. The territory to be annexed must be contiguous to the annexing district, and I don't think that that's a problem in this case. Secondly, also I don't think will be a problem in this case, is that the school district, the detaching school district must not be reduced to less than nine square miles. I don't think that's an issue. You can cross that one off. Number three is the petition has to include a description, a meets and bounds description of the affected territory that's sufficient to identify the property. And so when you look at the statute, it definitely refers to a meets and bounds description. And that certainly suggests that a surveyor's exact, precise description is required. But the courts have been a little less, have allowed for a little leeway in that requirement. And they only require enough detail in the description to allow an individual to identify the particular property as far as to the exclusion of others. So somebody could look at the map and say, "Am I subject to this or am I not?" That being said, you know, if, I think it is a good use of taxpayer dollars to go ahead and get a formal meets and bounds survey because you don't want to be wrong in the petition process. You don't want to have done all of this for naught. Fourth, signatures of the petition are incredibly important. The petition has to be signed by a majority of registered voters residing in the affected territory or a majority of the surface owners of the property if there are no residents. In order to determine whether a majority of registered voters have signed the petition, you have to determine how many registered voters are in the affected territory and then how many sign the petition. How do you do that from a practical perspective? Well, the commissioner has ruled in previous commissioners' decisions that as a preliminary matter, each board, so both, each board should determine whether the petition for detachment is valid by actually requiring certification from the county clerk that the signatures on the petition represent a majority of the registered voters residing in the affected territory based upon the most recent list of registered voters. And finally, the fifth threshold requirement is under the petition process is that the boards of the detaching and annexing districts must perform a tax-based ratio analysis designed to ensure that a school district does not sustain a grossly disproportionate loss of revenue in a detachment and annexation. Again, that's where your CFO comes into play. And this is that calculation that's included there, the tax-based ratio versus the membership, the ratio. And the analysis that's outlined in statute is very mathematical. It's fairly straightforward, at least for, you know, your CFO. Maybe not for me, but it's definitely for your CFO and your numbers people. After a receipt of the petition, both boards have to hold a hearing. And you have to give notice of the hearing, including publishing it in a locally, local weekly newspaper at least ten days before the hearing, no more than thirty days before the hearing. And you have to have posted notice of the hearing at least twenty-one days before the hearing. It follows the same guidelines as you're required to post for your election. What does the notice have to include? It has to include the date, time, place, and topic. In other words, you know, there's no fancy language, just hearing on detachment of affected territory from school district A, in this case Dallas ISD, and annexation to DeSoto ISD. All affected persons must have an opportunity to be heard at this hearing. And the districts have, you have an option. You can either hold a joint hearing together or you can hold separate hearings. But if you decide to hold separate hearings for obvious reasons, they have to be on separate dates. They can't be on the same date. And districts must have different legal counsel, which you would. There's two substantive issues that are set out by statute that you have to consider during these hearings. The first is whether the educational interests of the current and future students in the affected territory and in the remainder of the district are served by the detachment and annexation. And then the second issue that you have to consider is whether the overall social, economic, and educational effects of the proposed boundary changes are beneficial. In other words, is this good for our kids and is this good for our community? That's, that's how you really sum it up. And these two substantive issues are typically at the heart of detachment and annexation disputes. Whenever there is a dispute over a detachment or annexation, this is what the commissioner really looks like, looks at, are these two substantive issues. And it's clear from the commissioner's decisions, going back and reviewing the commissioner's decisions on detachment and annexation, that the educational effects is the paramount issue that's to be, that is to be considered. Because even when the commissioner looks at the social and economic factors, they're often so interrelated that it appears that the commissioner analyzes it from the overarching scheme of the educational impact on students, which makes sense. After the required hearings, then the board has to make written findings regarding the petition, whether the petition meets those five threshold requirements of chapter thirteen. And the board has to adopt a resolution, either approving or disapproving the petition. Importantly, you're restricted, you cannot revisit a valid vote on detachment and annexation. If it's in, if the initial vote is somehow invalid for one reason or another, then a second vote can be taken. There are actual commissioner decisions on this point. So, but for example, if the meeting is properly noticed, the agenda item complies with the Open Meetings Act and a proper vote is taken and the resolution, either, the motion either passes or fails for detachment or an annexation, then at the next board meeting, you can't have a motion to reconsider. That's, this is one of those, you know, precise areas of the law where it specifically says you can't revisit a valid vote on detachment and annexation. So depending on what happens at both boards, we'll then gauge the next steps. If the both districts disapprove, well, that's the end of the story. If both districts approve, then the county commissioner's court, or courts, if more than one has jurisdiction, they redraw the district's boundaries, both districts' boundaries. If one district approves, but the other district disapproves, then the aggrieved party can appeal to the Commissioner of Education. And on that appeal to the Commissioner of Education, in deciding the appeal, the commissioner considers the same factors that, that both boards considered, the educational interest of the students in the affected territory and the remainder districts, as well as the social, economic, and educational effects of the change. Importantly, the commissioner's decision can also, can be appealed to a district court. And so you can go higher than the commissioner. The commissioner somewhat, looking at the decision, in the past, commissioners have been somewhat reluctant to approve detachment and annexation procedures when both boards have not agreed. And that's the, that's the main point that I want you to, to consider. Is that if both boards agree, it doesn't go to the commissioner under chapter thirteen. But if the board, if one board approves and one board doesn't approve, the aggrieved board can appeal to the commissioner. And reviewing the commissioner's decisions are very fact-specific, very subjective, to be honest, of an approach to analyzing the various factors. The focus is on everything from the quality of education provided, the economic impact of granting annexation. They have looked, the commissioner in the past has looked at changes in attendance zones and bus routes, transportation patterns, strength of community ties in the affected territory. It really runs the gamut on, on the factors that the commissioner looks at. Which gives us, you know, the conclusion that there's no real predictable pattern to how the commissioner will approve this. And of course, we have a brand-new commissioner. And so that's also a, a key decision as well. We, we won't go into that. So all of this to say, this is, you know, was, I was asked to give you guys a brief overview of the possible methods for detachment and annexation. One, of course, being under chapter forty-one, one being under chapter thirteen. And I think, you know, at this point, what you guys should consider is, you know, which method of either you would like to go forward with. And because it's a very step-by-step process, you, of course, you would want to, if you did chapter thirteen, for example, you'd want to ensure that the petition is drafted exactly correctly because you wouldn't want to go through all of these efforts and then there'd be some, you know, hiccup in the, in the petition process. You want to evaluate those five threshold requirements, of course. And you'd want to do a thorough, you'd want your administration to do a thorough investigation of the educational, economic, social impact that will result from the detachment and annexation. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Board. This is a report item, but definitely one that's extremely important. We'll entertain questions at this time. I think Dr. Harris has a point first and then trustee Moncrief.
Something I hadn't noticed before, but I have a specific question. The property that we're, that's in question has very few residents. There are businesses there. How does the businesses play into that? So, so.
So in that case, if it's not, I believe if it's not a residence, it would be a the surface owner. And so it would be whoever owned the property. So the business might lease, the business that's there may very well lease the property. And so it would be the property owner.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Harris. Trustee Moncrief.
Okay, a couple of questions. So it looks like from what you've presented us, I'll call him forty-one, looks like the short-form way and thirteen looks like the long-form way, based on the number of steps and the intricacies involved.
Yes and no. I think there's more. Because forty-one has ever been done before, you know, there's less predictability in going the forty-one route. And remember, with forty-one, you have to get the commissioner's approval. To my knowledge, there's no timeline for the commissioner to approve. I don't know how many times you guys have been, have submitted things to the commissioner before, but in my experience, sometimes they can sit and wait for quite a while. And so I think to that extent, you have a little bit more control over the chapter thirteen process, especially if, and my suggestion certainly would be for Dr. Harris to get with Dallas ISD's administration and work together through this process. I think that you have, would have more control because you would control the message to your community that way. Particularly if the, you know, you brought it to Dallas ISD and they agreed, at least on the forefront. You know, they can't take a preliminary vote or anything, just like you guys couldn't, so after the hearings and all of that. But at least on a preliminary level told you that they were interested in doing this, then I think you'd have a little bit more control over the chapter thirteen process. Even though I think on paper, it looks like there's more hoops to jump through. I think those hoops are more easily jumped through.
And again, just from my own understanding, I understand what you're saying about chapter forty-one. You're saying it's never been done before? No school district has ever used that plan or?
According to TEA State Funding Division from this morning, with, the woman with whom I spoke, said to her knowledge, you know, on behalf of TEA, it had never been done before.
Okay. And then, understanding that it's never been done before, I'm just running through all the scenarios in my mind. I know that you mentioned something about there was, ultimately, there can be no, like, right of refusal to back out of the deal once you agree to. However, if the commissioner, since it requires that approval, that would stop everything in its tracks. Okay, so there is an out. Okay.
There's an out, but to the extent that there can't be an out in the agreement. But if the commissioner, you know, finds that the wealth equalization numbers are not correct and doesn't approve it, then it wouldn't be approved.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, trustee Moncrief. Trustee Gant.
Couple of questions. Which, would you say is the better way to? I don't want to use that.
To proceed.
A nice way to say it, to, not to have as much input by the commissioner.
Then I would say chapter thirteen, because forty-one for sure, by statute, you have to have the commissioner's approval. Thirteen, it only goes to the commissioner if one board doesn't agree. And so that's why I think it's important on the front end to have a conversation with Dallas. You know, because quite frankly, don't go down this road. If you talk to Dallas and Dallas is like, "No, we're going to fight this. We don't want to detach property to you all." Then, you know, in my opinion, if they're going to disapprove it, that, you know, it's very, it would be risky. You could still go forward, even if they disapproved, even if the Dallas board disapproved, and you could appeal to the commissioner. But that's a riskier move because looking at, at the commissioner's decisions, they're, like I said, there doesn't seem to be any sort of predictability about this factor weighs higher than another. Or it's important that, you know, not disrupt transportation. Sometimes that's important in some of the decisions and other times it hasn't been. And so there's no real predictability when looking at those past decisions, unlike other areas of the law. I mean, at this for a chapter twenty-one termination proceeding, I could tell you, this is what the commissioner looks at, this is how it's done. But for detachment and annexation, it seems to be very subjective.
I've worked extremely closely with several of those members and I just don't see it. Some of them have been receptive to conversation. But with the way the TEA has changed.
Correct.
I don't see the Dallas board being very cooperative. I hope I'm wrong. I want to be wrong. I want to be wrong, but I've been involved in some meetings with some of the, and I just, I just...
And I don't think you're talking about a whole lot of kids from Dallas, correct? I mean...
Well, there is some residential, but it's not...
What, weren't the kids, it was the property value, in my, right?
Yeah.
And so, and, and so, don't, don't mishear me, I'm not, you know, you don't have to get Dallas's agreement. For forty-one, you would have to get Dallas's agreement, and you would have to get the commissioner's approval. For thirteen, of course, it's easier if you get Dallas's agreement, because if both boards approve the, the resolution, well, then you just go straight to the county commissioners, and they redraw the boundaries, and you're done. But it's still, there's still a method to annex that property, even if Dallas doesn't agree, but you would have to go to the commissioner, and the commissioner, you've used it de novo, which means brand-new, that they, you know, he would, he would consider all of the evidence submitted, and, and wouldn't take into account, for example, any prior review of, by either board. He would look at the issue just from, from, as, as if he was hearing it for the first time.
And, and just one crazy, and satisfy my curiosity.
Sure.
If we did one and it failed, could we still do the other?
Yes. There's nothing that I have found in statutes that would prevent you from trying one, and if that one failed, from trying the other. I think they're mutually exclusive.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Hall.
I guess I'm looking at it kind of from, uh... Sorry about that. From, say, reverse, if it were DeSoto and Dallas's shoes, because we're talking about property value, we're talking about taxes.
Right.
We're talking about a difference probably in our tax rates. I don't know exactly how much it is, but, uh, did, I was, I was trying to remember, almost three years ago, we were talking about this. Was there ever a conversation with the Dallas School Board at all, or...
With the superintendent.
Superintendent, but not the board, or anything like that? And has, could, do you have any research at all on how many times this has been done, maybe in the Dallas area? Do you have anything like that?
I don't have any research specific to the Dallas area. I know that in preparing for, for today's meeting, I reviewed probably fifteen or so commissioners' decisions that reviewed chapter thirteen processes, and remember that commissioner only issues the decision if the boards don't agree. And so I think, you know, and there aren't any reported, that I am aware of, other than just trying to search district by district...
Right.
Of who would have done it, were both boards agreed.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if TAZV tracks that sort of information. I certainly can, can give them a call and ask, if that's something that they compile and, and keep track of.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hall. What, um, what role, if any, I'm not sure if this is, if, if this is like a typical school board bond issue, and I know it's been a few years, so forgive me if we've already covered this, but what role, if any, can the board or the district play in the petition process?
That's an excellent question. And so I think that, you know, the petition process is, would be different than a campaign or an election, where, you know, because as you, I'm sure are aware, you know, particularly since it sounds like you just went through a bond measure, you know, you're, you're, you're very restricted in making, you know, a contract with the voters, or in your discussions that you have with, with, with the public. I think in this scenario, it's very different. It's not an election, and so I don't, you know, from my perspective, I don't think that those same rules would apply to this, because it's not an election. It's a petition process, and so I don't see any reason why, you know, it would, the district could not, for example, use public funds to draft the petition, and to get, you know, to do the meets and bounds survey, and things like that, because I think that is, you know, would not be a gift of public funds. I think you could articulate a public purpose for expending those funds, and so I don't think your hands would be tied, to the extent they are, with dealing with an election.
Okay. Okay. And, I'm sorry, you had a question. Go ahead.
One last question. So, if you go the route of registered voters, a majority of registered voters...
Correct.
So we still would have to have both districts to agree?
You, no, sir. You would still, you would have to have a majority of the registered voters in the affected area.
That would petition the...
That would petition both boards, and the petition would be submitted to both boards, and then both boards would be required to have a hearing.
Okay.
And again, you can either have a joint hearing together, or you could have two separate hearings, but they have to be on different dates, in which you consider those two substantive issues, and anybody who's affected by the change, by the, by the potential detachment and annexation, would have to have an opportunity to come forward and speak a true public hearing. And then both boards would have to pass, have to make findings with regards to those five key issues that are set out in statute. Both boards would have to pass a resolution, but the resolution could be either to approve or disapprove the detachment and annexation.
So fifty-one percent of registered voters...
Correct.
Gets us started in this process.
Correct. Yes, sir.
And, and, I'm sorry, go ahead. Trustee Hall.
This, this is my question. If, even if the petitioned, the folks that are petitioned, and say they were sixty percent, even if they petitioned both school boards, it still is up to the school boards whether or not they accept that petition?
Yes, sir. It's, it's ultimately up to the board, each board, to decide whether or not they approve. Basically, they approve the petition, which is asking for the detachment and annexation, or if they disapprove.
Yeah.
And then if that happens, if one board approves and one board disapproves, it's called the aggrieved party, but let's say, and let's use some real-life examples. If the DeSoto board approved, but the Dallas ISD board disapproved, then you all could appeal that decision to the commissioner, and the commissioner could either grant the detachment and annexation, or he could not grant it.
That would seem to be a little more leverage with the commissioner, though. Seems to me like.
Yes, I think so.
Could be, I mean...
It could be, it could be.
Thank you.
Trustee Gant.
The only thing, though, if sixty percent of the registered voters in that area saying, we want to go in a different direction...
It would be hard as a trustee, in my opinion, to vote against your, you know, the majority of, of an area, that it's, they're not required to.
Well, what, what I'm saying is, using that same analogy, we got sixty percent that say, we want to go a different direction. DeSoto says, we want to go in that same direction. Dallas says, we don't want to go in that direction. Now, you've got the commissioner sitting here saying, Dallas says no, DeSoto says yes, but the majority of the voters want to go in a different direction.
And in some cases, that has played a substantial role in the commissioner's decision, as, in, in one particular case that I reviewed, the ma, the vast majority of the written decision had to do with affected property owners who came forward, most of whom were parents, and said, this is something we want, and that made a big, that was a big part of the commissioner's decision, and they all, the commissioner ultimately granted the detachment and annexation. In other decisions, and this is where I'm talking about, there's, there's no predictability in other decisions, that hasn't, that hasn't been, been the case. They're focused more on comparable programs, they're focused on transportation patterns, on, you know, taking, even going down to individual schools, like even if the district was, the districts offered comparable services, they, the commissioner at some, in some decisions, went down to school by school and looked at, okay, this, this property, this detached and annexed property would be served by this school compared to this other school in the, in the detaching district, and compared schools, not just districts, but schools and schools. So it just, you know, like I said, this is a particularly nuanced area of the law where there doesn't seem to be any sort of predictability in the commissioner's decision. So yes, in some, at least one decision that I reviewed, that was a major factor, that the majority of the, of, of the affected owners were very vocal in, in, and wanting the detachment and annexation, and that seemed to play a key part in the commissioner's decision.
I, I would, I would think that a lot of focus would need to be on that petition, but we all know that the commissioner is appointed and not elected, so, you know, votes may not mean anything. I mean, you know, I mean, the majority may not mean anything.
Sure.
She should have done it before the commissionship changed.
And, and we, we, we love everyone that sits in that commissioner's seat. We're really appreciative of everything, of everything that our commissioner does, and we have a great appreciation of him being a former board member as well, so. Is there any, we talked about a few years ago, so in this particular area, I think there were eleven students, once again, if memory serves me correct.
I think it was like...
It was, yes. I think, when we were looking at different times, I think that the numbers changed. Most recently, it was about twenty-five.
Okay, so twenty-five students.
But that was some years ago, we would need to go back, and then it's majority business, so I don't think, I'm not sure that the business actually count as a resident, as a voting registered person, those businesses.
Well, that's the question I was asking.
But I think that that's where it goes back to, and I, I will look more specifically into that, but off the top of my head, I think that's where the surface owner piece comes in.
For sure, for sure. So, so, the, the question I had, we talked about, just, we were talking about creative ways to kind of pitch this, is there anything that will, can we still allow those students to finish in Dallas ISD if they so choose, but take the property value?
I think that has been addressed in the past, and so I think that's a point of negotiation that you could grandfather in, for lack of a, of a better word, and negotiate that as part of the, the particulars with the detachment and annexation.
Okay. Very well, very well.
As part of that negotiation, I'm sorry, is it possible that we can allow a grandfather on those businesses with their taxes at the amount that they were with in the previous district?
I'm not aware of, of, of that sort of scenario, but I'm, I can look into that. The, the cases that I reviewed were all that, you know, where, as soon as the detachment and annexation was ordered, whether it was because both boards agreed, or because of the, because the commissioner approved it, that the next year, the, the, you know, the, they began, they began to be taxed at the rate of the district, because they weren't now part of the district's taxable value.
But would we have the power to allow them to stay at that previous tax rate?
I just, I don't know the answer to that, but I can find out.
Yeah, that'd be something great to find out. I mean, when we did this a few years ago, we were talking, was it four million dollars taxable value? And that being our industrial park, new businesses have come, I know there's a lot of business slated to come in this year, in 2018, it's, I mean, it's critically important, if we have the opportunity to, to do this, to go for it, that, that board, I would urge us to strongly consider it. At the end of the day, right now, it's four million dollars we don't have on an annual basis, and we lose nothing by going after it, and I, I really appreciate the sentiment now, or the clarification, that we can be involved in the petition process. If we can be involved in the petition proc, uh, process, that's half the battle. You know, that's half the battle in getting those petitions signed, and then it's a matter of voting, and obviously, it would be advantageous for us to get as many signatures on that as we can. So I'm sure administration will board, are there any further questions or comments, discussion as, as it relates to this? Administration, if you can get us a timeline of this, moving forward, I know the, the question of being grandfathered in the tax value would be instrumental, I'm sure. Dr. Harris, Ms. LaBoire, we also, it'd be, it'd be beneficial for us to get the city's buy-in on this, because at the end of the day, they attract businesses to that industrial park, and we know our tax rates are a little different, so we need to find out what that number is, and, and what we can do on our end if we need to adjust our tax rates, so that it makes sense, not only for the city, but for us, and at the end of the day, we want to make sure we bring all the dollars in for our students, so that we can add those electives at the, uh...
Your call goes back to the other.
At the middle school campus, no problem, right? So if there's no further questions or comments, thank you so much for, for making the trip out.
Thank you all very much for having me. Congratulations. Happy board appreciation month.
Thank you so much.
The record board has already approved us moving forward in this, so...
Yes, sir, and just, just a reminder, board, we did approve a, a few summers ago, moving forward with this process, and if you will recall, we sent out the surveys, and we got those surveys back and kind of left it at that, but now the subject has come up, and so administration will give us a timeline for moving forward and proceeding. Board, that brings us to our item three E, which is custodial update. Dr. Harris.
Mr. President, Board, just want to remind you, you asked us to go out and do some exploring with our custodial service. Dr. Lomé has done that, and she's going to give us an update, how that process is, is playing out.
Thank you, Dr. Harris and Board. As requested, I have provided the board with copies of the report cards or surveys from the campus. You should have each campus from September through December in order by campus. Also, we've provided the timeline, as we know, we are up, the contract, the current contract with our current vendor is coming due in July, and we were tasked with going out for bid and, and gathering information to help the board to decide whether they would like to continue with our current contractor or move on with a different contractor. So a part of the packet that you received also provides the custom, the custodial bid timeline, as Dr. Harris mentioned. As we have become aware of companies that are interested in going out for our bid, we have requested that they provide us with a list. SCC approached us, SSC, which is a part of, they're under the same parent company as Chartwell. They approached us probably September or October, notifying us that they would be interested in our business, and so we asked at that time that they provide us with a list of the schools that they currently clean. As a result, I've had an opportunity to visit two of those districts that SSC cleans, and we've also asked that those co, those companies that are interested and will participate in our pre-bid meeting, which you see on your timeline, is scheduled for Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. Part of the notice was that they bring a list of the, of the districts that they currently clean as well, so that we can also go and visit those locations. I also included an article for the board, because as I've had an opportunity to delve into this headfirst in learning this, what, what has come to surface for me is that what we know to be true in almost everything, and that is, you get what you pay for. We, we, the board will have to make a decision, I hate to even be talking about this on, on the back of the electors, but we will have to make a decision as to what level of cleanliness we would like to see at our schools. The one thing that I can say, as I visited Lake Travis last week, and Kaufman as well, is that no, no company is perfect. No company is going to do, you know, and, and in-house wasn't perfect either, is what, is what was communicated. The good thing about the Kaufman district is they had the opportunity of, of being under the same company that we are currently under, prior to moving to SSC, which is one of the companies that is interested. And as I had an opportunity to have those conversations, basically, what it boiled down to is the willingness of the company to be flexible. So as the facilities director in Kaufman shared his experience with me regarding his current, our current vendor, basically, the management styles and people themselves that were in the district just did not do what they wanted them to do as a district. As such, they are now with a different company. And as I visited, I actually went to campuses and visited kindergarten classrooms, because the one thing I do know is that kindergarten teachers, typically elementary teachers, are going to tell you, they're not going to pick on people, and they're going to tell you the truth. And so in one location, I had an opportunity to visit with a daycare, where the teacher was very disappointed with the company, because when her babies crawled on the floor, this was Lake Travis, her hand, their hands and feet were dirty, and so she didn't like it, and she didn't have a problem telling me that. But then she said, the one thing that they all said is that when they brought that to the attention of those, thank you, of those, the managers on staff, that they were quick... that they were quick to, to address their concerns. And so, you know, the long of the short of it is, Board, I provided you all with a document from the APPA that talks about what these levels of cleanliness are, as well as our documents, as well as I will continue to, as we get our proposals, and we get our RFQ, and we look at our, at who we're going to bring to the board. I will go out to whatever district that is, and when we make a recommendation to you, it will be based on not only what they told us on paper, but also what we've been able to glean from having visited those campuses. So I'll stop right here, because Ms. Moncrief, I know this was your request, and I'll give you an opportunity to ask me any questions for anything I may have missed, or anybody, Board President.
Please convey, is she still here? Kudos to the high school for being detailed in their responses as to what exactly is wrong with the cleaning service. And also, I saw Northside provided some detail, and Ruby Young provided some detail. And I think that's important. But overall, consistently, when you look at all the report, it looks like the restrooms for every single campus is of major concern, which is what I've been saying about the campus I frequent the most. I noticed is restroom issues, and that's not even from going inside, it's from walking by. So I don't know who conveyed to the schools about making sure that they are detailing their evaluation, but I thank you guys for doing that, because that'll certainly go a long way to assisting us in this task. And I looked at your chart, and it seems like right now, for my colleagues, it looks like we're paying for, hmm, we're at bordering level five and four. And I want to go up. I don't know about y'all, but I want to go up.
Thank you, Trustee Moncrief. Anyone else, Board? Thank you so much.
Just, just a quick comment.
Yes, sir, Trustee Grant.
Do we have any idea what, we've been with this company a long time. And I remember when they first came to us, everybody was so excited. They were doing a great job. Do we know what changed? And, and I understand what you're saying. This is a, it's a, regardless of how you look at it, it's a people business. It's all about relationships and attitudes and that type of thing. But you mentioned, you mentioned the financial piece. Do we have an idea what changed? Did, were they not paying as well as other companies? Or did the management just stop caring? What, what happened? Because I was sitting on this board when they first came to us, and it was, I mean, they started out with a few campuses, and then they grew, and it was, oh, everything was just hunky-dory. But now, when I look at, look at this, I mean, performance is really pathetic. So I'm just wondering, do we have an idea of what changed?
Trustee Grant, what I'd say changed is the expectation of the administration, that our administrators hold people accountable. I believe that the document was not taken seriously. And because every time we would hear a complaint, Mr. LaBoire was over at that time, and he'd say, well, they just keep giving aids, just keep giving aids. And so if I go back to Ms. Trustee Moncrief's point regarding the restrooms, that's one of the places I've visited at every campus that I went to. Because when I, another thing I know about elementary is that sometimes you can smell urine down the hallway because our babies are learning how to use the restroom, I'll just say that. And because typically, we look, we talk about elementary school, it depends on the time of the day that you visit a campus as to what the restroom is going to look like. Because if you go at breakfast time, the custodians are expected to be in the cafeteria cleaning the cafeteria at breakfast time. If you go to lunch, the same thing. And so, and then lunch takes up a big portion of a lot of, you know, of the school day, the midday, if you will. And so if they're there, then there's a likelihood that there may be some paper on the floor in the restroom. And that was the case everywhere I went. But then the expectation still has to be there when you leave the cafeteria, when that period is over, that you, the restrooms are the first place you go. But because you only have two people typically, in some instances, one, they can't be in two places at the same time. So then we expect our children to take some accountability and, and pride in their, in their facilities. But yeah, back to your question, I don't, I, I think that what changes the expectation, and the fact that we, that the people know that we're holding them accountable for doing these walks. We have Mr. Ernest Yarles, who has been walking the campuses, walking with the principals or their designees, and going through this document. And they understand that we expect, if we're going to get something done, we have to have hard facts. And we have to be willing to hold people accountable.
Okay. You couldn't see Mr. LaBoire, but he raised his hand. Did you have some additional feedback, Mr. LaBoire?
Yes, sir. Well, all of that part is true. We also did have a major change in the management of the company about four years ago. The people who were hired when we, when we did it originally, that were the ones who were the superstars that we said were, none of those people were here after that management change. That's when we started not getting the response. Used to, the, the district manager would go to the individual principals at least once a month, maybe more. They had his cell phone number. They could pick up the phone and call him, and he would take care of it. We also had different supervisors. We had different levels of the, the personnel that they were hiring. So while everything else recent is, has been part of it, I think it all stems back from that major management change and a major change in philosophy. None of those people, Mr. Spencer, Mr. Henson, Mr. Rodriguez, none of those people were there after that. And I think that was a huge, huge part of it. Another part of it that we, that originally was a problem, and I think we've worked our way through, was the requirement that they utilize a local business for their staffing, and they were utilizing a local business. So that local business wasn't always getting them consistent staffing. They got them staffed that were in there and out, and in and out, and in and out, on a, on a pretty consistent basis. But I, I think the vast majority of it was the, the turnover in management. I just don't think it was as hands-on. I don't think it was as, for example, I know Mr. Henson, when he got these report cards, he would actually put a numbered grade on there. He would give an 85.6. And if it was below a 90, he was at that school. And he would make sure that it got up to a 90, or a 95, or whatever his, his threshold was. When he retired, and like I said, Mr. Spencer retired, Mr. Rodriguez moved to another district. I think that's when we really started having the, the issues. We didn't have that hands-on. I don't even know who's the, the guy anymore. I think they've been through three since, since Mr. Henson left. So I think, I think ultimately, I think that was it. And I think they, they just didn't put the care into it. It was, hey, we got it for another year, you know, we'll see what happens. So I, for me personally, I feel like it was a lot of it had to do with the change in management, just for the fact that those were the guys that really stuck with us, and those were the guys that wanted this, this district. And they wanted to make sure that it was done well.
Well, I, I, I strongly believe in expectations. I strongly believe in customer service. We are paying for a service. And if we, my thoughts are, if we have to spend all of this time correcting issues, then we have the wrong people servicing us. You know, just real quick, I, I love Marriott, and I checked into a hotel in, somewhere in Florida. And the general manager, I had an issue, and the general manager wanted to tell me that I had had 43 issues in the last five years with Marriott. And Marriott was warning the GMs before I stayed at their property. I said, well, guess what? It's going to be 44. Because when I go take, when I spend $250 for a room, it was a personal stay. When I spend $250 for a room, and there's mold in the shower, I got a problem. So I don't care how many times it is, but my point is, we're paying a lot of money for a service. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I don't care about any other district. They can do whatever they want to do at any other district. But in this one, you're going to perform. If you want our green dollars, you're going to perform. And if they're not performing, they got to go. So I, I was interested in what had changed, because if we go get a new service, and we're doing something, and we're not changing, then we're going to get the same result, same result or less. So let's make sure, and there's no doubt in my mind that we are, but let's make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. But the expectation has to stay here. It, it has to stay at its peak, because our kids deserve the best.
Thank you, Trustee Grant. Trustee Hooper.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Dr. Lomoye, for preparing this information and, and attaching the article. I, I have somewhat of an issue, and we've, we've been talking about custodial services in this vein for the last three years roughly, if not longer. Most of that conversation has not been positive. In addition, knowing that we have even talked about exploring the possibility of new vendors openly. And for us to still get results from the campus, that suggests a very complacent attitude about that. Express some concern to me. Because if I were in danger of losing a contract, I would put my best foot forward. Unfortunately, that's not what I've seen. And we might have had moments of satisfactory service, and then a decline, and then getting back to satisfactory. But I'm going to prescribe to that old notion of cleanliness is next to godliness. And I'm glad that you brought the example of the pre-K students, and, and the youngsters, the younger students. Because I don't want a pre-K kid, you know, walking on filth, or, or something of that sort. So I just, I'm really concerned about the lackadaisical attitude that someone that we're paying to provide a service, as Trustee Grant said. And it's almost like our money ain't good enough for you, and you just going to do what you going to do. So with that being said, knowing that we have started this process in terms of bids, to make sure that we don't have lapses in coverage in terms of providing a service, what that looks like to me is the likelihood of us going with another service provider, potentially. And in terms of the expiration date on the current contract, that there might be some lag time in terms of getting the supplies and materials and all of those things in place. So just going forward, can you kind of give us some reality financially, or this, that, and the other, in terms of what that might look like in terms of a, an overlap contract that might have to be for 30 days or something like that? Because you don't want to go a period of nobody's cleaning anything. So can you kind of speak to that? If, I mean, you may not have specifics on that, but if you can kind of speak to what that might look like?
If you look at our timeline, we plan to present to the board our recommendation on March 27th. By that time, the CFO would have put some numbers together to talk about what that looks like, and whether or not I will discuss in cabinet if we, if we're concerned about that in light of the fact that we're talking about a July 31st, right, contracting end?
Correct. It's, it's July 1.
July 1.
They have, they, they, the reason we do it in March is so they have plenty of time to get their equipment together, get their personnel hired, so we can make just a clean, it may be a day, while one gets it out, one gets it in. But it's, it's, it's really clean. It shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. I mean, I don't know.
Shouldn't be an overlap.
Again, y'all are the professionals in terms of, in terms of doing that. But, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, maybe it's not as significant with janitorial services. But anytime you are transitioning somebody out and somebody in, there's potentially some lapse. And I'll leave it there, because I guess the next thing, in terms of like staffing and this, that, and the other, I guess, once we get further down the road, we'll talk about that in terms of, you know, some of the challenges that, that I guess you said something to the effect of local vendor staffing. So I would love to hear some more specifics about that going forward, so that whoever gets the next contract, janitorial or custodial services contract, that we can learn from any mistakes of the past in terms of moving forward. I too, like Trustee Moncrief, appreciate some of the detail that some of the campuses provided. So that, you know, when we do potentially, and more than likely, change custodial service providers, we can speak to, this is why we did it. And it was based on this empirical evidence provided to us from the campuses and provided to us over time. So it wasn't just a decision that was made, you know, willy-nilly. But again, we've been talking about this for I know three years, if not longer. And for us to still be getting lackluster service, you know, I'm kind of over it.
Thank you, Trustee Hooper. Thank you for the, I'm sorry.
Just real quick, in, in relation to what Mr. Hooper said, just like GCA was for the last four years, or the last eight years, all of these are one-year contracts. It's a one-year contract, and the board has to approve it every year for the addendum or for the, for the, for the new, for the new year. So every year, the board, it comes before the board for approval, and this won't be any different. It's a one-year contract with four possible one-year extensions.
Yeah, thank you for that, because that, that was one of my questions as far as contract terms. One of the things we have to make sure, though, is that, and it, and it, it could potentially be difficult the first year, right? But that timeline, that we have ample time to vote no on that contract, and still put out the RFP ahead of time. So, you know, if we can just put that on the calendar, whatever that timeframe is, if we're talking March for a June start, or July start, then we've got to make sure we have enough time to actually make that decision. Because, you know, if, if we're making it after the fact, you know, it's moot at that point for that year. Trustee Hooper.
And I think the other thing, while we were a little bit gun-shy, was because we had gotten so far into the process. And I do remember us saying something, and I'm not going to quote it exactly, about, you know, the bidding process. And I don't, like I said, I would have to play back in my head several board meetings years ago. But it was, one, it was the renewal, the auto, the one-year automatic renewal thing. Then the other thing was the process for going out to bid, and where we were, to the president's point, where we were in the process, and we kind of pigeonholed ourselves. And we're kind of like forced to go. And I think people took that for granted. And so I think, you know, I appreciate the superintendent and administration. We're on the front end of this. I mean, I think the administration heard it very clearly in terms of where the board, and overall, where the district is on custodial services and janitorial services. So, like I said, I appreciate where we are. Now, I appreciate your timeline, Dr. Lomoye. But I did express that concern previously, just if there was going to be any overlap, what that would look like. And again, I just threw out 30 days. I'm sure it probably will be relegated shorter than that.
Thank you, Trustee Hooper. Maybe you can speak to Ms. LaBoire or whoever can answer. This, because it is a, it's, it's a five-year, whatever, right, a five-year agreement with the option for us every year. Is there a fixed price increase in that? I, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Typically, yes. It's the consumer price, based on the Consumer Price Index for the Dallas-Fort Worth area.
Okay, so if that.
The contract will increase by that much.
So if that CPI, is there a, is there a... So if that CPI, is there a, is there a minimum or maximum in place for that CPI?
Yes.
So it's a minimum of 3%? So my follow-up question to that is, and it may be three, it may be four, five, right? So just hypothetically, if there's a fixed CPI increase in it, is there any benefit to us just doing a one-year contract period? Forget the option for the fifth year. If we're already saying that we're gonna be serious about considering their work to a prior date, right? Which will allow us enough time to go with another vendor, is there any benefit to us doing a one-year contract as opposed to a five when we know the price is gonna increase by at least X amount?
Just from what I've done in the past, I think the problem would be with their capital outlay to start a district of this size as far as the purchase of equipment and things like that. I think they want that option to at least have the chance to do that. I don't know, I don't know what kind of prices you would get for a one-year because of the fact that they know that there would be a possibility that they would be, that they'd be stuck. I don't know what, I don't know what your price structure would look like if we put it out to bid and in fact, it's already gone out for bid as a one-year contract.
Got you. Well, and I see negotiations March 1. I don't know how broad that negotiation will be. But even if it's a point of a two-year contract where we know we only hit 3% one time, everyone's got that incentive to beat that bid price and do it as low as price possible. But if I sign a five-year contract and I know I have at least a fixed increase, right? I can be more aggressive on the front end of pricing, but, you know, year three, year four, you know, your service declines, right? And that price continues to go up. And here we are sitting year five, you know, with our hands tied, you know? If that makes, if that makes clear sense. So yeah, so I'd be very interested in seeing what those options are as it relates to a two-year or a five-year contract or even a one-year. And then lastly, you know, we understand you guys are in a tough, I mean, we understand it's tough to find custodial services, right? That's why Janet King is as big as it is because there's such high turnover. Everybody wants to be a janitor because they think it's easy money. And so, you know, also when you add to that, you have a long-term contract, you know, and you've got to hire personnel and keep and maintain and retain that personnel. We understand it, but we also understand the needs of our students and what our community and what our parents and what we expect. So you guys, please go in there hard-nosed with the negotiations on March 1, and we look forward to seeing what you guys bring back at that later date. Any further comments or questions?
I just wanna make a comment to your point. One of the things that I'm looking at, GCA's contract and the 3% was 3% or the CPI, whichever is lower. And when SEC approaches, what she said is that they will come to the district and ask for an annual cost of living raise. And if they have, if their reports are good, then they would expect us to go with that. But if they're not, then they would expect us to say no. And the other thing is if we're giving the district a raise, then they would ask that we would give the custodians a raise also. So I would think that that is a part of negotiation possibilities that might not involve the term length of the contract as much as just us getting in and understanding what we would like to see happening for our, you know, district or whatever and to be fiscally responsible, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, Board, that brings us on to our last standard report item, which is item 3F, employment, resignations, retirements. We've had this, yes, standard report item, we've had this list. You guys should also, at your seat, have received the exit interviews from HR. We'll entertain questions, comments, if there be any on the standard report item. Trustee Daniel.
I wanna know how many people answered the exit interview. It looks on here like three. If you go by the bullets, or did you clump several people together?
Now, understanding, Trustee Daniel, that this report is just from December until now, January 20. Last month, in early December, we gave you from August until December. So we've only had a few resignations, total number of six, and only four of them responded.
Okay, well, I'm seeing 10 resignations. Well, actually, I see one advancement. But there are 10 names on this.
Right, and so what we do is, in that separation, give them the opportunity to respond, and only those few have decided to respond.
Okay, I just needed the clarification because it looks like three, which is what you said it was, right? Or you said six.
So they have a choice. They don't have to answer every question as they're working through that, and sometimes they'll answer some and not answer others.
Okay, and then on the new hires, it looks to me like everybody is certified this time?
On the ones that we've actually brought in, certified, yes.
Okay. I still have a problem with hiring, and these people might be wonderful, and I haven't seen them teach, so I don't know, but I still have a problem with hiring a human resource person to teach elementary history.
Right, so their degree may be in human resources, but they're going through the certification process which qualifies them to be able to teach that according to the state of Texas.
So they should have already gone through it according to this chart?
Or they're in the process.
So they're not all certified?
Well, they.
They all have degrees, but they're not all certified in the subject they're teaching or in the area that they're teaching.
They may be on a probationary certificate, but the licensing agency certifies that they are able to take on that position.
But I would like to see on the chart, the way we used to see it, probationary, certified, probationary, certified, just for one more little column to make it clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did that, just for clarification, did that change in this report? Typically, it would say probationary or certified. Well, but if everyone's certified, it wouldn't say.
That's correct.
Well, that's why I asked the question, and I don't think, I don't think that's what he, I don't think that's how he was answering. I think he was speaking in generalities, not something specific to the numbers, the list here. So the question that Trustee Daniel asked is, these teachers that are on this list, are they all certified?
Yes, they are certified to teach in the roles that they're in right now.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarity. Trustee Go.
On the board update this last week, I noticed that there's 40 total positions that we need to fill. Eleven of those positions are teaching positions. And it seems like a few of these positions have been on here since the beginning of school. But about 30 of them have come on since like 11/29, it looks like. So I'm assuming that some of them have decided at the end of the first semester not to come back for second semester. And if that's when they, you know, gave their resignation and it popped up on the sheet. So I guess what I'm saying is 40 positions left to hire, and I know that's out of your control. If no one applies for the job, that no one's qualified for the job, you can't hire anyone for the job. I understand that rationale. But I think having 11 teacher, 11 positions that are teaching positions that are touching children every day, is a lot of people who decided to leave the district at the end of first semester. So if I'm not reading that correctly, correct me, I guess. So anyway, I just wanted to make that comment that I think that's alarming that we had that many people leave at the end of the semester.
Well, let me just make sure there's a point of clarification so that it's totally clear. People leave for a variety of different reasons. We've had people that have left because of medical reasons. And matter of fact, that's several of those positions that are there. We've also had some where they've left to go take care of ill parents as well. So that's, I mean, that's the nature of being in a large school district that you get a variety of different reasons why people leave. We have some that left, we have one because of a pregnancy. Right, so we had one that lost, lost a baby. And so, so you have a variety of different reasons. So I just wanna make sure that it's, you know, I'm not sure where we were going with that. 11 people leaving, there's a lot of variety of different reasons why people leave a district during mid-year.
Trustee Hooper.
I noticed that we have a retirement of a former administrator. I just wanted to know, and I remember when we developed this position, the at-risk coordinator. So I wanna know, is that position going to be filled, repurposed, eliminated? What is the district's intent in terms of that particular capacity?
There's a really good chance that it'll be repurposed.
Okay. Okay, I'll discuss that later.
Okay.
Aside of.
All right. Yeah, thank you. This is a standard report item, new hires, resignations, that whole nine. HR, we understand, right, 65,000 fewer students went to school for teaching just in this year alone. When you talk about nationwide, we understand that we're not, I mean, this is something that everyone's going through right now. And when you compound with that, that we have the teacher match program that we have in place to make sure we're getting the right teachers in our classrooms. We understand that can be a daunting task, but please don't misunderstand. We still want to hire the best, the best teachers. And we know that we've given you guys more leeway with the, with last month and approving the, gosh, you guys help me out. What did we approve last month? The, we've mentioned it three times tonight, and nobody's gonna bail me out.
The grant.
The grant innovation, district of innovation. Thank you. District of innovation, we know that gives you flexibility when it comes to hiring CTE teachers and things of that nature. So just continue to be intentional about the hires that we bring in. Remember, you know, I think, I think I speak for the whole board when I say this. We don't wanna have a substitute teacher in there all year, but at the same time, we don't wanna extend a two-year contract to a teacher that doesn't need to be in front of our students. So please continue to bring us the best teachers that are available to be in our classrooms. Thank you. Board, that brings us to our action items, item 4A, which is mid-year budget amendment. Dr. Harris.
Mr. President, Board, the budget amendment in the general operating 199 funds includes a decrease in revenue in the amount of 1.6685. It also includes an increase in appropriation function 11, instruction 13 professional development, 21 instructional leadership, 36 in extracurricular activities, 41 in general administration, 61 in community service. The net effect of this amendment is a 2.434 decrease in the general operation fund balance. The budget amendment in child nutrition fund 240 includes an increase in the function 35 child nutrition of 747,500. This amendment is in response to the need to deplete excess fund balance as discussed through an annual financial audit. The net effect of the amendment is 747,500 decrease in child nutrition fund balance. There is no activity in 511 debt servicing. The recommendation is approve a general operating child nutrition and debt service as presented.
Board, you've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. This is an action item. I'll entertain a motion if there be any from the board at this time.
Second, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve this presented by Trustee Gant, a second by Trustee Hooper. Any questions, comments, discussions relates to this? Trustee Go.
I'm sorry, I just have to ask this question because, Bobby, I don't understand, I guess. Removing $1 million and some change from?
Okay, the, basically the amendment is, it falls right along with the mid-year financial report that we just went through.
Yes.
That 1 million six is a reduction in our revenue, and then the 1.4 is an increase in the expenditures.
So we're moving money out of savings?
Yes, ma'am.
Into checking, so we can pay our bills?
More or less, yes, ma'am, into budget, yes, ma'am.
Gotcha, that's, that's what.
I got it. Yes, ma'am.
I never have a million dollars nowhere, so just making sure I understood. Okay, so question?
Projected that that's what we will need, yes, ma'am.
Projected, I got that. So I guess my question, is that right?
Projected.
Projected.
I mean, you gotta be careful.
Yeah, we'll make sure we always say it's projected.
We haven't spent it yet, but we think we may need to spend it, so we're trying to make sure. I'm trying to get this in my mind so that I, so if anybody asks me why we overspent our budget, I can say we didn't. We're just planning ahead, planning ahead. If we need to spend it, we have it available.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Okay. So I have just a couple of questions about that.
Sure.
Looking at page 85, I see that preschool teachers, preschool prayer, professional salaries, and group insurance for that preschool. So this is when we added?
There's, yes, ma'am, there was two positions. One position, it was my fault, I forgot to budget, and I under-budgeted on the group insurance. And then the other two positions were two positions that we added after the budget was approved.
Okay, because we added more students to the?
Programs, yes, ma'am. One of them was a wraparound coordinator, and the other one was for the after-school program.
So the part of, part of the grant requires us to have a certain position in place. So remember, we benefit from the grant, which is quite a bit from the grant. So it's a really.
It's basically a wash.
It's a wash, right. Because we really get a lot of benefit from having that position in place on the back end of that. And I think we just got approved for that other second part of that grant, which is another. Right, but it kind of runs in parallel. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Any further questions, comments? Our Board, you've heard recommendation of the superintendent. We have a motion to approve this presented by Trustee Gant, a second by Trustee Hooper. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and motion carries 7-0. Board, that brings us to our second item under action, 4B, which is to approve construction manager at risk. Dr. Harris.
Well, these guys have been very patient. I was waiting to tell you that, actually, this is always a test. I'm just telling you right now to see how much endurance that you actually have because I can tell you that it will be an enduring, endurance situation. But, here we go. Let's see here. Got a lot to read here. Yeah, so I will, you guys have kind of looked at this before, so let me just say this. So as you know, as we move forward, we're required to have a construction manager at risk for our new elementary school. We have gone through a bidding process, and we also, we've gone through an interview process. And so it was narrowed down to three for the interview process. And then it was selected by the committee. So, Mr. President, in order to keep this moving forward, we are recommending North Star Builders Group to be approved as a construction manager at risk for the new elementary school in southeast DeSoto.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Board, this is a action item. You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. I'll entertain a motion if there be any at this time.
Mr. President, I move to approve the recommendation of the administration recommending North Star Building Group as the construction manager at risk.
We have a motion by Trustee Hooper to approve this presented. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a second by Trustee Daniel. Any questions, comments, discussion? Trustee Gant.
I just wanna make sure my head is clear. I think I may have missed a meeting because the last one I remember, we interviewed architects. And then was there another meeting that maybe I was not at? Were you guys interviewed CM at risk?
No, the committee did the CM at risk.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I didn't miss something.
You didn't miss, you didn't miss.
Okay.
And I will say, Board, I really wanna commend North Star that they came in, did a really impressive job presenting to our committee, and they were just totally blown away by the professionalism of this group. And all I can tell you is, you know, they came back to me telling me this has to be the company we've gotta go with. So I wanna let you know that you come highly recommended by a group, and so we're. So I want to let you know that you come highly recommended by our group, and so we're, but you know, with that high rec- uh, recommendation comes, okay, all right. So comes a lot of, uh, expectation and accountability, so really excited to be working with you guys, and we're really looking forward to it.
And that is assuming we all vote for it.
Oh, that's right, we're in board.
Trustee Gant.
I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself there.
Um, would one, two, uh, all, all you guys can come to the podium, I've got just, uh, one or two questions.
Would you like us to introduce ourselves?
Please.
I'm the president of North Star Builders. We've got Aaron Skates, who's our chief, uh, operations officer, and we have our senior project manager who'd be on site for the project.
Okay, um, there's, there's a question in here somewhere, okay, so just follow me.
Well, I caught the, I caught this. I was paying attention to that.
Smart man, um, and, and that's where I'm going. I just want to ensure, and you may have heard this somewhere else, but I got to be of sleeping nights, I want to make sure that the message is conveyed that the expectation is that you guys are on site, that there's whoever you designated as, as the man, that he's there. If he goes to lunch, somebody else steps in his place, um, our kids deserve the best, and I, I am confident that our committee has made a good choice in bringing to us. Now, that's, one person, but this community entrusts us to make good decisions, and our kids deserve nothing but the best. And regardless to wherever else you have worked, while you're here performing for us, we're top-notch number one, and we expect nothing but the best. So, um, if for some reason you can't fulfill that, that's okay, we just need to consider somebody else. But I'm assuming that you guys feel very comfortable that you can do that, and now here's the question. Do you feel you guys can live up to that expectation?
Absolutely. Uh, the three individuals that we brought to the interview that the committee met, they will be the three individuals on your project from day one to day done, and that's just our philosophy. And we're, as far as you'll be concerned, DeSoto ISD will be the only client we have. That's the way you'll be treated. You know, we know that kids come in August, no question about it, and we like to be there day one to, to help with the patrol of cars or whatever we can do to help, to make sure the air conditioning and the lights and everything's working that first day. So we're, we're a part of the, part of this thing from, from the beginning to the end.
Okay, and, and, and of course, we, we want things done on time, and, or shorter, and we want to save money.
Time and budget, that's right.
You got it.
I mean, I would, I would really encourage you, uh, not far Duncanville ISD, we just completed two elementary schools, Hastings Elementary and Acton Elementary, and that'd be the quality of, of, uh, a building you should expect, so if you have a chance to drive that, and I'm sure that the committee has done, especially after listening tonight, they've done an exhaustive, uh, uh, job of checking our references, and, uh, I think that's one of the reasons why we're probably here tonight.
And the last thing, and I'll leave you with this, is, and don't take this the wrong way, but I want honesty. If you run up against something and you go out there and you start digging, and something pops up that you didn't expect to be there, the expectation is that someone would come, hey, guys, look, this is gonna have to happen. I've always said this, I just want you to be honest with me about where we are. If we're a lousy district, tell me a lousy district, so we know what we got to do to make ourselves better. And I don't, I don't want people fishing around with me and throwing stuff at me. Just give it to me straight. So if you go out there, and Mr. Hooper just said all, and if you strike all, then we're okay.
Please let us know.
But I think you get my drift, you know, if you go out there and something, this, that doesn't need, you go out there and there's lead out there, I expect you guys to come by and not have a meeting, say, we're gonna build a school, anyway, guys, look, did you realize? And, uh, so we'll, you know, we'll have that information to make a good faith decision.
But we feel like that's why you've hired us. We're, we're gonna bring to the team with the architect our knowledge of schools. Uh, Aaron, I've been, uh, involved in building schools since nineteen ninety-six, when the law changed on how, uh, it, it, you could, uh, procure contracts. In ninety-six, that's when they changed the CM at risk, and that's what we've been doing for the last twenty years. So we bring a lot to the table in this process, and you're gonna, you're gonna get the benefit of it here. But we're, we're not the yes men. We sometimes say things that people don't want to hear, but it's what you need to hear for the project to continue.
That's my expectation, and I'm, I'm just one of eight sitting up here, but I, I need to know the truth, and it may not be something that I want to hear, but if it's what I need to hear, then it needs to come out.
We have a mantra, we like to sleep at night, and if you, if you're open, honest, transparent, you can sleep at night, and that's, that's our philosophy.
Well, again, our kids deserve nothing but the best, and we owe, we owe it to them to give them the best, so I think you understand where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gant. So, um, so obviously, we, we have the, we have the scores and all that good stuff, and the price point, and, um, and so this is the recommendation the administration's made. Uh, my question is, as a CM, I noticed you guys had listed a few proposed, um, um, subcontractors for different projects. Uh, what's your, what's your relation in selecting those, or what's your, what's your process for selecting those?
So we get the drawings from the, from the architect, and then we'll put them out, we'll advertise by law, uh, and then we will receive proposals, uh, in the same manner that they receive the proposals for the CM at risk, where we go through an evaluation process that we put in the, in the, in the, uh, advertisement, there's a nine-point selection that we use to, to select subs. But on that day that we open them, we invite the owner and the architect to our office, and we open them in front of them, we all go through them, and if there's any, uh, uh, subcontractors that, that the purchasing department, anybody that has worked in DeSoto, we want to know about it, so we can invite them, be sure they're on our list, um, but it's, it's an open process. Again, open and transparent is the way we, that's the way the CM at risk process works best.
For sure, for sure. So, uh, a part of what we've discussed at a board level, um, not only on this project, but on others in the past, is the, uh, minority business owners, um, having a fair shake at this, and we know that one of the things that, um, that trips them up on some cases is their, uh, insurance, their bond and capacity and things of that nature. Um, do we, now, we discussed, and I don't know if this has been discussed with them, um, thirty-five percent minority home. Then are we still sticking with that thirty, we're firm on that thirty-five, right? That's the expectation.
Thirty is the, is the percent that we've put in the board policy.
Thirty, okay, so thirty is the expectation for...
And that has been conveyed.
Absolutely, and so, so my follow-up question to that is, are you guys committed to being a rider for, um, any business that would fall under that thirty percent to get the, to get us to that mark?
Yeah, and I'll be honest, in the last five years, we've not had, uh, a, a goal to, to obtain.
In the districts that we're working in.
Right, right, so, um, what we do in, in times that we, that we've used, uh, or tried to get minority participation, sometimes we break down the bid packages, smaller bid packages, that will help some of the, the smaller, smaller businesses. But I can tell you, the, the, the one elementary school in Duncanville that we just completed, didn't have a goal. We went back and checked for the interview, because we thought it might be a question, and we had twenty-four percent, uh, without a, a goal or a special effort.
We actually have quite a few subs that follow us that are minority owned, and quite excellent subcontractors, and they do quite well in the school business, so.
Very well, very well, so that, but that expectation, six more percent, right?
Got you.
Six more, and...
Well, we think it's attainable. It, you know, we're gonna bring it to you, if, if it costs more to get there, we want you to know that there's an opportunity that, yeah, that, that guy may not be in the low one, but he helps us get to the thirty percent. What would you like to do?
For sure, for sure.
There's a lot of communication.
Right.
Yeah, thank you so much, and let's, let's stay on top of our senior.
I just want to say that in keeping with your question of the architects in line, uh, in light of, uh, you wanted to know about older buildings, not new buildings. Uh, and so I asked them, uh, for their oldest school, and I had an opportunity on Friday to visit Los Colinas Elementary. Um, and the principal, um, Ms. Jones, indicated that one year after, uh, this project was complete, that she was able to still contact David or Philip by phone if she had any concerns with anything on her campus. And they were very minimal, the things that she did have, and so she, um, was very, very appreciative of the company and felt like, uh, they were on-site at all times and did, uh, delivered and over-delivered in many cases. She was excited about, uh, you all sharing in Thanksgiving, uh, a celebration for the kindergartners where you brought them in and, and provided them Thanksgiving dinner, and how you included the, the community in understanding what it is that you all were doing, uh, for the district. And so, uh, we did, uh, try to make sure that we asked those questions that we remembered you all asking, that's why they're familiar with some of them, uh, so that we were clear in, uh, making sure that the expectations that were set out from, from you guys, from the architect that we did, um, passed those on, uh, to our contractor, and so we are very confident, uh, that, and if y'all let us down, no, I'm kidding. We are very confident, uh, in, in what, in, in what they provided, as well as what we were able to get out there and hear and see for ourselves, uh, that this is, um, a great recommendation.
Thank you, thank you for that. Um, thank you guys for sticking it out tonight and, and being here. Uh, thank you, Dr. Harris, Dr. Lamonge, Mr. LaBoard, and Mr. Scott for bringing this to us. Uh, thank you for your work on it. Board, um, having said that, we have a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent by trustee Hooper. We have a second, uh, by trustee Daniel. There are no further comments, questions, or discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and motion carries seven zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're excited to get started, and we're behind, so.
Well, we, we can definitely appreciate that, so, that sentiment, so thank you so much, look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
All right, Board, that brings us to executive session, which we have no need of tonight, and administration let out a big woo-hoo, right? Uh, and so that brings us to item six, which is, uh, board comments. Um, I will start to my left with trustee Go, and we'll work our way around the shoe.
Hello, everyone. Mr. President and fellow trustees. Yeah, it seems like it's been a while since we've seen each other, but yet, I don't know. Um, I've only visited a couple of campuses since we met last, but I have attended a lot of, uh, sporting events, it seems like. I ta- I've taken in a couple of soccer games, and, uh, one game was nice weather, one game was frickin' cold out there. But I tell you what, the cold does not dampen the spirit of the friends and family of soccer fans. So I would encourage you all to catch a soccer game if you can, because it is a riotous occasion. And, um, I, I have to admit, I didn't stay to the bitter end. I hear they won, but I didn't stay to the bitter end. I, I just couldn't, it was too cold. But, um, I've also taken in four middle school basketball games, and I, the excitement at those games is just about the same. So I want to encourage you to go to middle school basketball, there's nothing like it, let me tell you. The, uh, reason I love the middle school basketball games, I guess, is because for the, and they were all girls' games, let's say. Um, four of the coaches are former players of Coach Goad, and a lot of the children on the field playing are former students or players of Coach Goad or I, uh, children. And some of them, one, in one occasion, it was a grandchild of someone I taught. And Grandma is in the audience, and I had a long conversation with her, the parents, I've ta- talked to them when I'm there, and it's just a feeling of community that is like none other. The fact that these young people have chosen to move back to DeSoto to live, to have jobs, to raise their families, is just really heartwarming, and I guess we have, of course, in this district, a history of, uh, strong sense of community and strong sense of trying to build a, um, tradition, maybe, can we say, of educating, um, children, and we have, here we have grandparents, parents, and then children that are in the audience or on the field playing and, uh, still know each other and talk to each other and share history with each other, and it's just, it really gives you a warm feeling. So if you have a chance to experience that, I encourage you to do that. And then, of course, I've gone to several, uh, basket, high school basketball games, and I had the privilege of being there the night that Chris Dyer received his award for having his seventh-hundredth win, and that was a real, uh, special occasion, because, um, I've watched Chris win probably a lot of those games, so it was a real special, special time, um, to see that. And then, um, last week, I think it was just last week, I attended the strategic planning update meeting and, uh, heard about all of the things that had been accomplished, or in the process of being accomplished, that were part of that strategic plan. And then, um, Ms. Trimble and the committee was going forward about what's next, and what do we do next. So I encourage you to attend those meetings also, because it's, uh, quite enlightening to hear what we've done and, uh, the progress we're making in our district. And then after that night, Ms. Daniel and I went to the, and several others went to the city council meeting, and, uh, we were recognized, of course, by the city council for all the work that we do, do, and so that was a warm feeling. And the last thing, I guess, that I want to talk about is eighth-grade expo that was this last Saturday. It was quite the event. I can't imagine the undertaking, um, of getting an event like that put together. So I want to give a big shout-out, I hear it's Dr. Inslee that did a lot of the legwork on that with the help of Matt Edwards, I believe. And so, and Ms. Levels? The whole team was there, okay, the whole team. Well, thank you, team, for putting together an event like that. I got there late, I got there in time to hear the last part of the parent porch, and then, um, listened to that, um, I can't even tell you what his name was right now, but to listen to him speak to the parents about setting goals and expectations for their students. And then I left that early, and I was able to go to all three groups of, uh, children and, uh, see their enthusiasm and what, and talk to a few of them, got a few of them to talk to me, about what they thought high school was gonna be like, and if they were excited about going to high school. I was in the cafeteria while one group was eating, and I sat down at a few tables and talked to the kids there. And their expectations of high school are pretty unrealistic, but, um, they'll get there, you know, they're gonna have fun, you know? Well, what kind of education are you going to have? Well, they really weren't too keen on the education part of it, but they were really into having fun. So, um, they're eighth graders, what can we say? Um, but, um, thank you for putting together that event, team, and, uh, it was very well done, and the kids were having a good time, and, uh, for the most part, they were well behaved, and for the most part, they were learning, so that was the purpose, I know, so thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you, trustee Go. Trustee Daniel?
All right, first of all, I want to thank the schools for the goodies that we got tonight and for the recognition, and I want to thank you for the dinner. And I have to say, I think I like being Tom Landry better than I liked being Superwoman last year. Uh, the bobble head is cute, and he'll be on a shelf for a while. Uh, I was there also for Chris Dyer's seven hun- seven-hundredth win ceremony, and of course, the four-state champions, um, tailgate party, uh, basketball games, went to the Duncanville game with the Goads, which was quite interesting. I surely thought we were winning in the last second, but, uh, the referee didn't. I went to the strategic planning committee update, and, uh, I, that was really important to me, since I worked on that committee last year. And I'm looking forward to the next meeting of that, because the kids who worked on the committee were juniors last year, and they're gonna be, they're gonna be at the meeting the next time, and they're seniors this year. Uh, I was going to go on the field trip with the Early College and the Collegiate Magnet, uh, to see hidden figures. I really, really wanted to be there, but I had to go to the eye doctor before then, and I didn't know he was gonna dilate my eyes, so I couldn't see, and I didn't think I should drive down twenty with... I should drive down 20 with no vision, so. But I'm really disappointed, so I have to go see that on my own. Duncanville is playing here.
No, it's Cedar Hill.
Cedar Hill. Trustee Go misinforming. Cedar Hill is gonna be here tomorrow night, and we're expecting a sellout, so get there early. That's all.
Thank you, Trustee Daniel, Trustee Moncrief.
I want to thank everyone again for the lovely gifts and for thinking of us. It is an absolute pleasure to serve you. I want to send a thank you to the mayor and her team for putting together the tailgate party for us. It was so nice, and it was just the enthusiasm of everyone, and I think the students really enjoyed themselves. I know I certainly did. It was a great time, and it was just great to come together and finally be able to celebrate all of our teams. I want to thank, I think it's Myla Wilson, Dr. Inslee, that whole crew for second year in a row, UIL competitions at elementary school. Love it, love it, love it. Did not get a chance to attend this year, but just the idea that we are doing that is so important, and I just want to commend you all for continuing to put in the work on that. There are always things we can fine tune, but at the end of the day, it's just a great opportunity for our kids to be involved in other things that they wouldn't normally be involved in. I'm so glad to see Jordan here tonight. I have the pleasure of saying, she was my swimming coach a couple of sessions ago. I am so proud of this young lady, and I know my girls really look up to you, Jordan. So if you don't know it, you already have some young fans. We're just excited about all the things that you're gonna accomplish in your life, and we just hope that we're providing you with the best foundation possible here at DeSoto ISD. And I said something earlier tonight, and I'm gonna say it again, because I mean it with all my heart, if it ain't good enough for my kid, it should not be good enough for anybody else's kid. And that's part of the reason why I do this, and I hope that's part of the reason why everyone here does this. So teachers out there, parents out there, anybody watching, if it ain't good enough for your kid, it should not be good enough for anybody else's kid. So we can all take that and recommit ourselves to what we do in this district and the purpose for which we do what we do, because it's all about in furtherance of our children.
Thank you, Trustee Moncrief. And Trustee Moncrief mentioned Jordan, who's here. Regionals are February 3rd and 4th, because she'll be going to the finals on that second day. And I believe she stuck around and hung out with us, Trustee Moncrief, because she wants to lobby for a fan bus to go, but I don't know, I might be wrong, but I think she has a person to go talk to after this. Trustee Gant.
Just a quick note to Ms. Daniel. My wife and I went to see Hidden Figures Saturday, one of those days. You will not be disappointed. It is absolutely magnificent. It's just, it's a wonderful movie. But I had opportunity Saturday to attend the parent porch, also the eighth grade expo, spent a few hours out there with a lot of members of administration, spoke to a lot of teachers, can't say I've visited with a lot of students. Things have changed down through the years, you know? And there was a time I could go out there and I knew this student and that student, and things have changed a little bit, so. But I was very pleased with the event and the hard work that was put into it. And I had opportunity to spend some time with Ms. Blackburn, and she gave me the significance behind what it's all about and the whole bit, which I think is absolutely wonderful, the idea of bringing the middle schools together and the whole bit, and start building relationships. And so I think that's absolutely wonderful. My wife and I had an opportunity, the first, I think it was the first week that everybody had gotten back to school, I believe. If you look at the pictures before you, my wife and I have been discussing this for a couple of years. We wanted to provide kind of an appreciation lunch for plant services. And because of my travel and the whole bit, we just never had an opportunity to do it. Well, we had some time off during the holidays, so she said, let's go ahead and do it now. I had had a conversation with Mr. Lester, Don Lester, about three months ago, hey, I want to do this. And I was supposed to get back with him, and three months later, I hadn't gotten back with him. So we went over there during the holidays, I say the holidays, we were still on holiday, but school had started back, and he selected a day, so. I literally stayed up all night putting it all together and making sure everything was prepared, and my wife and I served lunch one day for plant services. And one of the reasons we wanted to do that is, this is such a special, everybody in this district is special. I mean, our teachers do a great job, our administrators do a great job, but plant services is that one group that I think we maybe not intentionally take for granted. You know, while we're sleeping, they're up at four or five o'clock in the morning, and they've already started their day making sure that these buildings are ready for our students. And we expect it to happen. We expect when we get to our offices or get to our campus that it's gonna be warm and everything's gonna be working and the whole bit. And they've already started doing those things. I mean, when we're enjoying our time off for the holidays, they're up here working, because that's when they get a lot of things done, because kids are not, you know, are not on the campuses, so. And the bottom line is, I think we have the most wonderful plant services organization that there is. I mean, they are just absolutely outstanding. So that's something that we wanted to do, and God gave us the, blessed us with the opportunity to do that. So, and my wife made the comment that this should be an annual event, so. Guess it's gonna be an annual event, because she gets what she wants, so. And then, in addition to that, had an opportunity to provide lunch for the administration building here Friday before the Cowboy game, and Ms. Rand told me that the theme was Cowboys, and you know, put a lot of support behind the Cowboys. So I said, okay, why don't we provide some barbecue for them? So I just want to thank you guys for what you do, and know that although we may not be here at a meeting, that you guys are always on our minds, and you're just a tremendous group. This is such an outstanding district to be a part of. Meetings that I attend all over, and you start hearing what board members are going through, and I'm like, geez, we don't have to deal with that. You know, this community is so, so supportive, so. And I think that concludes my list, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Gant. Trustee Hall.
Okay, it'll be short and sweet. I sort of extended my Christmas vacation for a couple of months, for something I needed to get done, and it's done. But when the tailgate party came along, I couldn't miss that. It's my first event to go to that I sat through and sat too long. But anybody's had back surgery, may understand that. But it was quite an event. But I'm at the point where I can get back out there and go and visit the schools, and I'm excited about that. But other than that, it's been kind of quiet. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Hall. Trustee Hooper.
Thank you. First, I want to thank administration, Dr. Harris, all of the principals, teachers, staff members, students, community members for their recognition and support this entire month. I had the opportunity, along with my colleagues, to go to the city council meeting, and Mayor McCowen started it off in terms of recognizing the board at the last city council meeting, so I want to thank Mayor McCowen for that recognition, as well as the phenomenal job that she does in providing leadership to this community, as well as being a great supporting partner to the school district. She has a deeply embedded love for this school district and all of the 9,800 students who attend, so thank you, Mayor McCowen, as well as the rest of the community. I had the opportunity to go to the Respect the Rings tailgate, which was a very fun and exciting experience, where we got to, you know, finally recognize all of the sports teams in one venue. I know we had different individual celebrations, but it was really good to provide an opportunity to, you know, celebrate all of their accomplishments jointly. I think that one continuous message that we spoke about, yes, we're extremely excited about what they do on the field, the court, et cetera. But the great thing about these particular students is not only are they athletes, but they're students first and they're athletes second. We talked about the number of students that made the All-Star academic team in comparison to our district and other comparable districts. And I think that those are significant, very significant accomplishments. We talked about the fact that we had three All-Americans. Those are significant accomplishments. And it was great to even see a lot of the alums back and talk to them about some of their college experiences, and some of the challenges and some of the successes that they've had, and be able to pour into them and give them some advice on how to move and progress forward. So that was really good, to be able to have that opportunity. And so just know that we're always here to support you here at DeSoto ISD. In addition, I got a chance to go to the eighth grade expo, as well as the parent porch. But, you know, one of the most exciting things at the eighth grade expo, and I shared this experience with President Sherman, was I got a chance to take a picture with the 76A Swimmer of the Year, Ms. Joy Malone, as well as the Coach of the Year, Coach Palmer. And so, you know, getting this opportunity to take these photo ops with these dynamic young people, you know, these are, when I get old and old and old and old, and that that I'm pointing to this side, a wing of the table, you know, I'm gonna be able to talk about, when I see these young people on TV, that I remember when she was a student, I remember when he was a student, and look at how they are changing the world. And being able to tell that story to my children and grandchildren and so on and so forth, that's what makes it all worth it. You know, this is the best gig in town, and I don't receive not a dime for it. But being able to pour into the lives of the young people and help to prepare them to become problem solvers and productive citizens, and being able to compete in the global society, that's what makes it all worth it. So, you know, people ask, why do you run for school board? Why is it so important? Because the reality is, their lives, their futures matter, and they matter in a very significant way. And you've heard it a million times, and Warren used to say it all the time, DeSoto ISD, DeSoto, it's a special place. And you may not understand it, but it's a special place.
Thank you, Trustee Hooper. Dr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President, just very briefly, I do want to recognize our Desmond students who left a card for the board, and just want to acknowledge them that it says, may every special thing you do bring blessings in return to you. So we certainly want to acknowledge them as well. Also, I just want to tell the board how much I appreciate you and what you do. It is your month, it's your day. You know, I know there's a, it's a very tough unpaid volunteer job that you do. I know you get it from a lot of different sides, but I want to just assure you that we do appreciate the candor that takes place here, the mutual respect that's given here, the willingness to want to collaborate here at the board table, and just really appreciating that everyone's comments matter, and is appreciated, and it's my hope that as we continue to move forward and find other ways to better provide our students with opportunity and with access, because that is ultimately the key that we must do. So when you look at student achievement, I would tell anyone, you just can't look at it from the standpoint of what is the outcome. It's more about what is the input that gets you to the outcome. So access means access to the best teachers, I mean, it's access. Those are the variables that get you to student achievement. And then opportunities also that students have. That is what gets you to student achievement, and that is the job of this board, is provide those, you know, those opportunities, to open up those doors for access, so that students have an opportunity in order to excel. But I did want to say, I just appreciate that, and I'm certainly sure you can tell from, you know, just the students that come before you, the principals of what they've given you. Matter of fact, if I'd known some of the items that were out there in your gift package, they probably wouldn't have been there. But I didn't ask them to go that big, so. But, I mean, I hope you can see that they have a lot of love and a lot of respect for you, and acknowledging that the hard work that you must do every day. So with that being said, as Mr. President said, there's a lot of work ahead of us as a district, not only as a district, because I don't speak for it as a district, but even as public education in general. It was pretty amazing, and then I'm gonna stop, Mr. President, that there was an article today about this new system that came out, and a spokesman from TEA said, it just, it blows me away that you can't look at those scores, because not all the information was included in the total outcome. It just blows me away that a spokesman from TEA, because they said, and for them to admit that the final outcome would not be right, because they would literally be just not telling the truth to the public. That is from, and that is the system in which we are working in right now. So there's gonna be a lot of challenge ahead of us. I would encourage everyone, you know, call your senators, call your representatives, really get involved in this process, because the real deal is this, whether anybody wants to say it or not, there's this big outcome about what is expected that's out there. And nobody wants to zero in and say, what is this really all about? It's way out there, and I think, you touched on it, Mr. President, but it's out there, and we know where it's going, and I would certainly ask us to try to stay ahead of the ballgame. Last thing, I hope it's true, because I think when I leave here tonight at 10:00, whatever time we get out of here, Mr. LaBord has said to me that they've actually may have possibly cleared a path into the property from Parkerville, and have gone out there to bore holes or something to get soil samples. I don't know if he's telling me the truth or not, but I am so anxious about getting this process started, that I'm actually gonna leave here, and I'm gonna see if they've actually bulldozed that pathway up to that property, so I'm gonna see if that has happened. But we're pretty- But we're pretty, really excited right now to see that everything... Oh, I wanna drive down there.
Miss LaBois, he took me out there one day, we almost got stuck.
But I was excited to go, that's what...
Yeah, absolutely. We were excited, but we were spinning our wheels along the way.
But we're getting close and so it's pretty exciting to be able to think about providing a brand new, um, a school, innovative school, innovative approach to how we're gonna be dealing with students. So really excited about that. So thank you, Mr. President, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And congratulations.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Hooper, yes, sir.
Just one quick thing and, you know, and many of you have, have seen this in the paper, but I, I would be remiss if I didn't comment on this. Here recently, many of us heard about, um, former DeSoto alum Zachary Orr, um, having to retire. And, you know, it's not uncommon for people to have to retire, um, from, you know, sports. But what I was extremely impressed with, and I think contributes to the DeSoto brand, is the great level of character, integrity, humility. And when the general manager, the owner, the coaches and everybody can speak about not so much what you do on the field, but, you know, your struggle, your grit, your determination, your integrity to the level of which we've heard this conversation about Mr. Orr. That says somewhere along the line, "We got it right." And even Zach credits a lot of that to his experiences here in DeSoto. So I think that that speaks volumes, kinda going to somewhat of what Dr. Harris said. Obviously, our number one responsibility is to prepare you academically and to prepare you to compete globally. But guess what? We did that with Zach. But in addition to that, you know, we created a great, great, great young man. And I think that that speaks volumes. That speaks volumes. I mean, you know, I, you know, I have to admit, I was almost in tears. And I say almost, it's a little inside joke. But I was almost in tears just to hear the, the incredible story. And then just, you know, to see that you're talking about a person who was undrafted and fought his way to being able to be a starter and compete at the highest level. And still walk away and say, "I left it on the field, I'm prepared for the next chapter and I have a plan to go beyond that experience." That's incredible. Um, and the fact that, you know, we helped to prepare him. I mean, obviously his parents and everybody, his community helped to install. But, but even Zach credits a lot of that to the investments that were made here in DeSoto ISD. And Zach has come back to numerous occasions and, and spoke and, and done things to, you know, support the district any way and every way that he could. Um, and so, you know, we can't ever beat up on ourselves because we're still producing outstanding young people. And I just had to say that, and excuse me, Mr. President, uh, for jumping back in line. Um, but I, I mean, God put that on my heart and I just had to say it, so, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, thank you so much for that, Trustee Hooper. We, um, you, um, you and, and really, um, a few of, um, everyone's sentiments speak to that, um, that we realize that, um, there is more, uh, to life, uh, than a score. Um, and, and in speaking with and meeting with a former state director of, of testing here in DeSoto, or not DeSoto, in Texas, um, he spoke about the assessment. And we know, um, if we go back and look at toss tests, we look at tax tests, that the questions have become progressively more difficult. And he broke down why that is. He said they work on a sixty-three percent model, okay? They expect fifty percent of the kids to get the question right, fifty percent to get wrong. They expect thirteen percent to guess and get it right. And so at the end of the year, if there's a question, uh, that has sixty-four percent of the kids make, getting it correct, they change that question and make it more difficult to get to that sixty-three percent and below. Cuz all it is, is a ranking system. And so it's, it's, it removes the sense of, "Do you know the content?" And makes it a sense of, "I have to rank you compared to your peers." And so, uh, that's just something that, to, to Trustee Hooper's point, uh, we provide kids and should be providing kids with more avenues than just some assessment that comes in. And that's not running away from accountability, but that's saying, we have to look at the whole picture of the child. And one of the things that's been mentioned, you know, this is my fourth year on the board. And one of the things that I love that has happened now, Mr. Gant, now that I'm in, well, a little bit last year and this year, is the kids actually know who I am. And they run up and they'll give you a hug and they'll tell you about their day and they'll do all of that. Cuz I've been around long enough, right? And, and just to build that relationship with them and to speak with the eighth graders and one of them talk about how he wants to go into aviation. We have an aviation program. And just by providential, you know, providence, uh, leaving, one day I heard the commercial saying they're calling for, um, airline mechanics, starting pay sixty-nine thousand dollars, which is not to make you rich, but just to know that our kids can graduate with a certification fresh out of high school and make sixty-nine thousand dollars a year at eighteen or nineteen or seventeen, depending on what age they are when they graduate? That's phenomenal. And that's the avenues that we're extremely excited about, extremely proud of, is that our kid can take a dream, an idea, a thought, a talent, but also have a pathway to reality and making a career, uh, decision for that. So that's just something I just wanted to share with you. Um, and I promise, next meeting, next meeting, I'm not making a comment, y'all. Y'all are gonna make all the comments and I'm not gonna make any. But, um, but, uh, board, uh, if there are no further comments, uh, the time is now ten, uh, twenty-seven here at the DeSoto Administration Building and we'll call this meeting adjourned.